Okay, I guess we're on. Welcome to the July 21st, 2016 zoning board of appeals. We have, I think, seven or eight different things on tonight, seven things on tonight. So as everybody's not here till midnight, remind everybody of the, sort of, the rules. The rules are, when it is open for discussion to the public, please stand up, state your name and address clearly, so Annie can take it down. And address your remarks to the board. If you have questions of the applicant, it'll go through, it'll go through the chair. But everybody will get an opportunity to ask whatever questions they have. So with that, we can proceed to the first application.
Continued from May 19, 2016, Stockbridge Properties LLC, a 41, 11, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26.
Thank you. Okay, so this was continued from April? May? May. Okay. And, um... Hi!
Hi. Representative Henderson, representing manager staff, and representatives of the San Francisco Regional Engineering, I wasn't involved in the new application, I agree with the application, as well as prior decisions related to his property. I think the simple issue that was closely before the board, that the original plans were whether or not, that addition to the non-conforming structure, being substantially more detrimental, situation that already existed, it was a request with respect to a dimensional change. But apparently during the course of the hearing, it strayed into a prior decision, a 1990 decision that defined who the tenants were at the time, and what their activities were. I'm gonna let Greg go over the plan as I would, all the type of matters that we're going to say, but I don't think the addition is successful, definitely, while I'm into that. But as to the issue of the tenants, this decision clearly defined eight non-conforming uses that existed. It is the uses, not the people. Nothing is going on there now exceeds anything that was permitted under this decision. So not quite sure why the use issue is even before this door. We didn't apply for any change of any of the uses. There is no complaint in any of the uses that changed, and there's no evidence of that, or nothing nor... All I can do is go through what we...
Why don't you do that?
We'll do that when Greg finishes.
Okay.
Why doesn't Greg go over the plan, we're talking about the use?
Okay.
For the record, Greg Morris, registered engineer, Morris Engineering. The bottom of the plan here is Stockbridge Road. The property line is highlighted in bold here, comprises of approximately nine acres in size. Several buildings on the property, existing dwelling number 106 Stockbridge, out of the front, is an existing commercial garage located here. There's another commercial garage located in this location. That's the building that we've made the application for. We're proposing to add a one-story, 16-foot-wide by 30-foot-long addition. It's a contractor, it's Mr. Spass, contracting business that operates out of that garage. They're looking to add a simple little office space for keeping office material. So we provided a copy of the assessor's records. The assessor's records show that garage building, and specifically in that location, they show that the previous tenant of that space, the Green Connection Landscaping Supply, they had always operated their office trailer at that location. That trailer has subsequently been removed. We provided a copy of that picture, which shows that location with the trailer. The addition itself complies with the setbacks. This is in the R2 zone. It's gonna be less height than the existing garage, so visual impact from the street, you won't see the garage, uh, sorry, you won't see the office addition beyond the garage due to the height. Again, in size, it adds 480 square feet to that building. That building exists right now at 1,860 square feet. It represents a 25.8 percent increase in the size of that building.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the construction?
How close is the existing building to the lot line?
15.7.
Okay.
Requirement's 15.
And you're gonna attach this, or propose to attach to the dwelling, not a separate dwelling?
Correct, it's attached.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any questions about the building?
No, not really.
Okay.
Neil and I spoke about it previously.
Okay, so do you want to go into the whole issue of the uses, then? That we were talking about?
I made, there was a decision which Neil, I believe, discussed with the board the last time, look as I say, I wasn't here, but there are some critical paragraphs and findings in this decision. Let me start with the first, and that is, the property, which is the subsidyed application, was owned by Alan R. Wheeler and Company from 1900 till 1976. That's a long time. And during Mr. Wheeler's tenure, the tenure of his construction company, the property was used for the storage of supplies, the maintenance of vehicles and equipment, using the connection of the construction industry business, in which he engaged in putting road construction, equipment installation, underground utilities, excavations, storage and maintenance of use of repair of vehicles. Then after Mr. Wheeler sold it, it was acquired by two other entities before Mr. Spass, and the subsequent owners used it for 12 additional purposes, eight of which the board also found were non-conforming. And what they found were non-conforming were the following eight uses. Jan Callis Landscaping Repair and Storage of Trucks and Equipment. MEN Landscaping Repair and Storage of Trucks and Landscape Equipment and Supplies and Storage. Turf, Tough Turf, Storage of Landscaping Equipment and Supplies. JR Trucking Storage of Trucks and Equipment. AJ Carpeting Storage of Trucks and Carpeting Supplies. Patterson Construction Storage of Trucks...
Well, could you go, just slip that back. Storage of trucks and what kind of supplies?
Well, the first one, AJ Carpeting Storage of Trucks and Carpeting Supplies. Patterson Construction Storage of Trucks and Equipment. Ferry Hill Fisheries Storage of Trucks and Equipment. And the Heckam Contractors Storage of Trucks and Equipment. And we're now to say that collectively, these eight tenants here and after shall be referred to as the tenants, and their activities used shall be referred to as the tenant uses. These were determined to be non-conforming in existing at the time. Then they went on and found car repair and retail uses, which were not non-conforming, which were not correlative. My point is, nothing in the uses which were non-conforming by virtue of Mr. Wheeler's company's use, nor of these eight additional uses, has changed. The tenants may have changed, but what's there of landscaping and construction companies and stores, there's no retail trade, there's no manufacturing, there's nothing changed. The names of the entities may have changed, but if Joe owns a drugstore and sells like a Sam, it's still a drugstore, it does need a special permit, if it has a special permit for a drugstore. So I didn't know what evidence that we offered to suggest it had been changed, but from what I know, I don't think there is.
To clarify, the decision was not before us in evidence at the last meeting.
Okay.
And the concern was that there may have been something, the way it was written, because it did refer to entities, specifically enumerating the activities that they were doing.
Right.
But that it could have been linked to the entities, and you've suggested now that it was not. I wanted to clarify, though, the, you mentioned that repair of automobiles was, you said it was not non-conforming. It is non-conforming, but it was not pre-existing.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. That's why it was not granted at that time.
That is correct.
It was something that was not typical, pre-existing, a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Right, but I just, I was concerned, I've heard about this, because I actually did the time of work and the zoning opinion from the background, I looked at this, and my information, which I had at the time, led me to believe that, that clearly what was going on there was within the purpose of what this decision said, and I find how things changed. I acknowledge that the tenants are not the same as 1990, but the usages are either the same or less offensive as to what they were, so. I didn't see why that was before you, when that factors the issue.
So site pro is, what is site pro?
I'm Mr. Spass, I'm the owner. It's an excavated utility contractor, contractor.
Which is actually much more like what Mr. Wheeler was, since he did, he did underground construction, he did gas work, he did telephone work, road work.
I mean, where you guys headed with this? I do think this, is this, consider this part of, I mean, in compliance with the prior permit, do you think?
I don't see where the, I don't, I never believed that the board could, within their bounds, tie the use of a property to specific tenants.
Oh, I agree. I don't, I don't know that anybody disagrees on that.
Like, we just wanted to see this document.
Right.
I'm comfortable it's, it's a continuation of a pre-existing non-conforming use, and you've even given us evidence that the, that there was an office space in that area, although a portable one.
Bob?
I would agree with that. This certainly doesn't increase any non-conformity, and in my opinion, is not increasingly detrimental to the neighborhood, since it'll be basically invisible from the street.
Anybody else on the board, any comments or questions? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on this particular application? Yes, sir?
My name's Chris Carros, I live at 119 Stockbridge Road, so I'm directly across the street from this property. I have no objection to the office space, but there is a use that's been on that property for a while, not listed in the uses, and it's the mulch production, which creates a stink, which creates a huge amount of traffic, with people bringing stuff in and shipping mulch out, and, you know, 18-wheel, it's kind of up and down Stockbridge Road. Way more than previous, you know, from a previous owner. I've lived, I'm third generation in my house, so he's watched this place, you know, sit down, we have to open the doors. The mulch production wasn't part of the pre-existing use, and I think that's the biggest issue that, you know, the neighbors have, is the noise and the traffic associated with the mulch production. Wheeler used it as storage and repair of equipment. Trucks left in the morning, they came back at night. There was no intense traffic during the day, and that's been the problem. You know, the father directly behind him, you know, other friends, one's having problems selling her house, the other one, you know, he's clear-cut, all the way behind her property. Now the kids are, have, you know, clear access directly onto his property, and the equipment running. And again, equipment running at the mulch production end of the property. I personally would like to see the mulch production stopped.
Okay, well, let me suggest two things. Number one, that issue is not before us. Number two, you're not without redress. You can speak to the building inspector if you think that they have violated their permit, have a discussion with him. Certainly, you know, there's plenty of case law that talks about increasing beyond what has really been permitted. I have no idea if this fits the bill or not, but that's a discussion you certainly can have, and it would be in terms of an enforcement action, I believe, for the, for the permit that exists. So you're not without a remedy if that's, if it's happening.
But that was, I mean, the continuation was part, that's what we brought, you know, the uses up last time.
Got it. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Addison from Linda Lane. I also have lived in the neighborhood, so if they wanted to give the age, I remember Alan Wheeler and the way things were. My question is, and I know it's not for this board, but, so is this, the building inspector is the person that we go to to talk about things? For instance, it's been since 1990 that the special permit is in, issued, but who maintains that? Who maintains the coming and going of the businesses? Over the years, there could have been other non-conforming things in there, because they change constantly. Also, the special permit, I was just looking at the Chris had, comments on how many vehicles can be there. I don't know how many vehicles are there now, but I, it seems like a lot more than 33, but I haven't gone over counted. Who oversees that they are staying within the special permit?
I guess you guys. I mean, you start with, it starts with you. Our building inspector does not run around town with, you know, a book of permits to see, are you within your permit?
Okay. So if you have an issue, then we can...
You have an issue, go visit Bob, he's very happy to help you. I'll probably get a bad email tomorrow.
Welcome to the board, Bob.
But that's a place to start, you know? Everybody, you know, businesses do grow. The issue, I think, becomes, at some point, does it grow, outgrow its permit? I don't know, I can't tell you that.
A good place to start, particularly with a new owner, is a discussion with the new owner as to what...
Absolutely.
...will be going on on the property, and if there's a community, you know, a neighborhood understanding, you can skip Bob, and he can take care of other things that are important in town.
As Chris said, most of us don't really care about the building, it's better than the trailer, because I'm concerned.
Right.
So it's not the building or Andrew's business, like he says, it's what they do there, so...
Excellent, okay. Anyone else?
Just out of curiosity, are you gonna be, continuing to do the mulching?
One of the tenants that I have, he grinds, I think he grinds twice a year. It's not like a regular stuff that he's grinding daily. He'll bring a grinder in two or three times a year, with my understanding. I've only owned it since, yeah. So I'm figuring things out as we go as well. I've done a lot of work trying to clean the property up. They talk about clear-cutting, and there's no trees on the property that take it down. What I've done is removed thousands of yards of tailings, so maybe they see that as clearcutting, but really what I'm doing is trying to clean the property, level it. We have a fence being installed around it, I've had the outside landscaped. Trying to be a good neighbor, with the understanding that's where I want to run my business.
Very good.
I just remember, at one point, that mulching...
Has that at all got moved to Grow Green?
Yeah, that was a discussion I thought we had a few years ago.
The fire department was shut down because of the cat heading by, and they were over there multiple times, and we had to check that.
I'm sorry, you can't just chat. You can't just chat. It's the old, gotta raise your hand. It's just like school, we're back to grade school, so. Okay, um, all right, does anybody have a motion? On this one? We make Frank do it all the time, Anthony, you're on the other end.
You make Frank and I do it all the time, to be honest.
To grant the applicant's application for a additional building space to include an office attached to the existing commercial garage, as shown on the plan. Proposed addition plan, 106, 108 Stockbridge Road, prepared by Morse Engineering, dated 3/30 and revised 3/31. Is that the most recent one, Greg? 3/31, 16?
Yeah, I think it was on it. I think you should find that it, we should find that it's not a substantial detriment. The change is not a substantial detriment, as part of that.
And define, and specifically to find that the change is not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You want to do the decision?
Sure, I'm happy.
Great.
I'll give it to you in a week or so.
Great.
Thank you.
And welcome to the neighborhood. Okay. Annie?
Continued from June 16, 2016, J&amp;D H Family Realty Trust, Hannover, Massachusetts, requests a special permit finding under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 8, 10.3, to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming multi-family dwelling at 93 to 97, First Parish Road in Siteway. Assessor's map, 49, block 3, person 1.
Hi again.
Good evening. Greg Morris for the record, Sean Barry, J&amp;D H Realty Trust. Last time we were before you, we presented our plans, which were to raise and reconstruct a five-unit multi-family building at 93 through 97, First Parish Road. You had referred us to the design review committee. We've met with them three times since that last meeting. In this last time that we met, in that last week, we've got favorable results on the layouts that Mr. Barry has prepared. The plan has changed significantly from last time we were in front of you. It still remains a five-unit building, but I'll show you the revised architectural and site plan. I'll start with the architectural plans. This is the front elevation, as you would see it from First Parish Road. The board, and what is at concerns, primarily with regards to the massing of the building. The building was much taller, if you recall the original layout. We had essentially drive under garages at the first level, and then we went two stories above that. We've lowered the entire profile of the building, so it's living on two floors. We added some dormers in the roof, although there's not living space up there, that's just for aesthetic. That was at a recommendation from design review committee. So it's gonna look like a standard story building. We've removed the garages entirely, the outdoor parking. We located a porch along the front of the building. Along First Parish Road, there's a porch on the building that's out there right now. This is a view from, if you were standing with your back toward the harbor, looking to the west, First Parish Road here, on the right side of the plan. What you'll see, and what's reflected on the site plan, is essentially what we were able to do to cut down the mass of this building and the width of the building, is we made it so that there's the main units, units one through three in the front, and a connector to the back units, the back replicating a carriage house style that they felt was appropriate to the site. This actually remains that there had been some sort of carriage house or car in the back of this property. This side of the building here is where we'll be locating all of the AC units. We have trash for each individual unit, which will be inside of each unit, or on the porches, covered and enclosed in lockers for each of the buildings. And then the rear elevation. That's east elevation. East elevation. This would be if you were standing on the property immediately to the east, the Bornstein property, I believe, and looking toward the harbor. This is the side of the building that you would see. I'm gonna flip back to our site plan. The site plan here, again, to familiarize you with it. First Parish Road is up top of the page, property line in bold. The primary building being in this location, we pulled this up much closer, First Parish Road, than our original layout. As you recall, the existing building, the front yard setback on the existing building is 4.1 feet, as it sits today. We proposed it in approximately the same location, 5.3 feet up close to the road, and that's to the porch, which is hanging. The main building itself is eight feet further beyond that. We relocated and redirected the parking. This site, as you recall, the existing site only had a gravel parking lot behind the building, enough room for three or four cars. The majority of the parking was utilizing a town space across the street. We now have a new parking area. This accommodates 10 parking spaces. We located on this side of the property, again, to get it away from the residential properties facing the rear, residential properties facing the west. You'll see that we have AC units. We've located our mechanical, all on the east side of the property, again, trying to pull it closer to our parking lot, trying to keep it on that side of the building, as opposed to on residentially zoned abutting properties. We've maintained the drainage path. One of the abutters had comments regarding a drainage or tributary along the side of the property. We've walked the site with the conservation agent. We've confirmed that there is no ruins on the site, but there is a drainage channel that runs through here, that is maintained with this layout. We maintained the catch basin of the First Parish Road. We will not be altering the drainage patterns associated with that. We've maintained the vegetation. There was some concern with regard to vegetation along the western property line, specifically a large tree at the front corner. We'll be keeping that tree, and in addition, we proposed a five-foot planting scheme along that side lot line to provide additional buffering to the neighbors. We felt this layout made much better use of the property. You know, we did change the plans rather significantly. We reduced the garages. I try to thank all in all, you know, we're happy with the design review process. I think they were happy with the iterations that we made. We're back.
So I have a couple of questions. Now, the present, the width of the present building is how wide?
With respect to First Parish Road, 65 feet in width, measured parallel.
Okay, so the face of the existing building is 65 feet?
Okay.
Okay, and what is the proposed building?
With respect to First Parish Road?
Right.
55.
Okay. And the square footage, the gross square footage and the proposed?
Existing is 4,098 square feet. The proposed is 5,784.
And then, just to clarify, is that rentable square feet, or is that total square feet, including the common areas?
Yes, total. We're going off the assessor's records.
I mean, for the new building?
The new building, it's total, it's...
That's total square feet, includes common hallways and whatnot? Thank you.
And I know another question, what was it?
Can't think of it.
Well, just to clarify, you guys have eliminated the garages? Is that correct?
We have, I mean, as part of the design review process, we went through five different iterations with the design review committee. Again, and I perhaps should have brought some of the history to show you what we've involved.
I think we've gotten some of them. I don't know if we've gotten all of them.
You may have copied on most of it. Yes, as Greg alluded to, the original plan was kind of a townhouse road structure from the front, parking directly in the front of the building, hungry parking garages in two stories above. And so some of the comments, I think, from this board in the first public hearing, and then going into the design review, similar comments about kind of the mass of the structure. So we, then, I charged the architect to try to scale it back. We also reoriented the structure so that it ran perpendicular to First Parish. The board's thoughts and comments were that it actually would look better if it was more of a colonial style from the front, set the turf to the side. In addition, the Bornsteins had concern that all the living space in the back of the building would face their front, so that light, concerns about that. So there was another iteration, and I tried to exactly what I did. Ultimately, we came back to this kind of traditional way, where a main colonial home in front, with the carriage house that's attached by some columns and an harbor system, kind of common courtyard in between. So, you know, ultimately, with the original structure that I purchased, is really pretty rough shape. I mean, it's, it's serious structural issues, it's serious wiring, plumbing issues, so it's a complete gut renovation. And it got to a point where, again, I looked at it as economically, to raise and reconstruct as a rental building, it was uneconomic, so looked at it as an ownership opportunity. And these are not large, we're not proposing large units. The average unit's, I think it's 1,100 square feet, two bedrooms. So it's still very efficient. This is not really large-scale dwelling units. The original building, as Greg mentioned, did not accommodate all the parking. There are currently, there are currently five dwelling units, 10 bedrooms. We're proposing five dwelling units, 10 bedrooms, and we're now accommodating the parking.
So, you know, ultimately, with the original structure that I purchased is really pretty rough shape. I mean, it's serious structural issues, it's serious wiring plumbing issues, so it's a complete gut renovation. And it got to a point where, again, I looked at it as economically, to raise and reconstruct as a rental building, it was uneconomic, so looked at it as an ownership opportunity. And these are not large, we're not proposing large units. The average unit is, I think it's eleven hundred square feet, two bedrooms. So it's still very efficient. This is not really large-scale dwelling units. The original building, as Greg mentioned, did not accommodate all the parking. There are currently, there are currently five dwelling units, ten bedrooms. We're proposing five dwelling units, ten bedrooms, and we're now accommodating the parking on site. And we're offering to have all the utilities on that parking side of the building. Also certainly willing to offer, and it could be presented in the bylaws, that no lighting be placed on that west side of the building. So again, the idea here is to create all the living and activity on the more commercial side of the site, which gets a tax-collected building. And, you know, a couple of other notes, in terms of the access onto First Parish, there's currently only about a sixteen-foot alleyway, and it's very tight. The fence is currently proposing that centerline has been shifted over about ten feet, allowing for visibility, again, accommodating a larger lane, access and ingress. You know, bring the site up to current codes. We're going to go through stormwater review, site plan review, planning board, so those type of issues.
You have to go, you don't have to do that with them, do you? I think that's why you're here, with us, no?
I, well, stormwater review.
Oh, stormwater review, yeah. Oh, I thought you were talking about full site planning.
We have to go stormwater review.
Yes.
So we're going to decide we'll live up to current standards.
Right. What's the bylaw? I haven't looked at it and I should have, but what's the bylaw require with respect to parking? One per bedroom or one and a half per bedroom?
No, one.
One, one per.
One per bedroom.
One per bedroom?
Yeah.
So you presently don't comply with that, correct? You have to say?
Yeah. And what's the percentage of increase in the gross square footage?
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
Wow. And?
It's on here?
Forty.
Yeah, you need to put it on. If you, I haven't seen it.
Yes, they have both numbers on there.
Yeah, but you have to put the percentage. Forty percent, okay. Well, first of all, let me just, I know at least some of the neighbors have participated as they could in the site plan review. It's, I think it's great, you know? I have gotten some feedback from Design Review, rather, that you've been very amenable to, you know, the change and accommodating concerns of your neighbors, you know? So I just think it's, I mean, it's not a done deal yet, but I think it's a commendable process and I congratulate you and your neighbors for going through it. I think I have asked all of my questions. Anthony?
I don't really have any questions. I agree, I think it's amazing what the Design Review process has accomplished. You know, I think if I wasn't a abutterer in proximity to it, I'd be a lot happier with this design. I, you know, I think that the board will need to address, I do see an intensification of a nonconformity, which I think you hinted at, but I think that even if it wasn't for some of the other nonconformities that are being removed, I think arguably it's an acceptable intensification. You know, I think they've really gone out of their way, you know, to make this less detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think what I'd like to say, and I'm interested to hear what the abutters have now, is that, you know, the board really has no power to make this not a multifamily building. It's, you know, we have, a multifamily building may be detrimental to the neighborhood, but it's allowed. It was a multifamily building before the zoning bylaw said it couldn't be. And I think also, we got a, we got correspondents that raised a question as to going from one owner to multiple owners. And I thought that was a valid question, but just in terms of my thoughts and understandings on that, yes, if they go to condos, multiple people will own the property, but having those people who are occupying those units, own those units and care more about the upkeep of those units, might not be detrimental as compared to renters who might be more transient and whatnot. It was one thing that struck me, but again, a very valid question. I think that's all I have.
Anything?
No, he answered most of my questions. And, you know, the other thing, keep in mind, they, as Neil dug it and stated before, you know, the building was in poor shape and kind of a dangerous building anyway, as far as different, whether it's ceiling or the structure, starting to go, so anything would be an improvement. I don't think he had a choice to work with the existing building from the beginning.
Ed?
Nope.
Frank?
My comment would be, well, first of all, to say the same thing that these guys have just said. Thanks for going through a long process. I know it probably was frustrating at times, but this, the plan, I'm not saying I'm approving of it yet, but is probably much better for the site than when originally started. So at least the process worked that way. And I'm interested to hear from what the abutters have to say. The question about this being a condominium, I thought was a good one as well, and it seems to me, and I'll just throw this out there, Anthony, I think knows more about this than I do, is we have the power to condition whatever permit we grant, and I think that that runs then with the land and probably would run with the condominium association so that the people, whoever comes and goes, even as condominium owners, would be bound by certain of these conditions. And I think we would need to, before we could approve anything, is to make sure that we have all of those conditions that you've just represented here today built into the permit, because I think it's going to be important both for the town as well as for the abutters, you know, ten and twenty years down the road, that everybody knows, and we have a record of it, unlike Stockbridge Road where, at least in the hearing twenty years ago, they were pulling in all the old timers to find out what was going on. And so I think the more that we can set forth in the decision, the better. It'll protect the abutters, it'll protect the town. That's my comment.
Okay, Bob?
Yes, I was present at the DRC meetings and, again, commend the process and the participants in that process for reaching this conclusion. It's a far cry from where the design started and I think much better. It's interesting that I think this replicates very possibly what was historically on the site. There's a concrete slab behind the existing large building along First Parish that probably was a barn at some point. And so, you know, what you're seeing is perhaps what you would have seen a hundred years ago or more on the site. It's compliant in the sense that it's got the right number of parking spaces, one per bedroom. The proposed project has the same number of bedrooms and same number of dwelling units as the existing building, so there's no increase there. The only dimensional situation that's not meeting code right now is the front setback, and that's not going to be increased in its lines, the other setbacks, the property line are being met. You know, I think in general, it's a very good, good place to be with this project.
Okay. Did you guys have anything you wanted to add before we open it up to the public? No? Okay.
I was going to end with this, but honestly, the Design Review process was helpful. I think that they were interactive and helpful, almost in some points coaching a little bit, so I thought it was a good process.
Well, I think the goal always is, is to make something that's, you know, in keeping with the neighborhood and with the town, and that is pleasing, you know, to your neighbors and the environment, and still is something that you can invest in and make money, because I hadn't heard that you're a charity lately, so, you know, I hope it all works out, but... See, some abutters are neighbors. Would you like, anyone like to be heard? Good or bad? This is the time, yes?
Sorry, I'm looking at ninety-nine First Parish Road and Ben Bornstein, ninety-nine First Parish Road. We wrote a letter that we sent out earlier. Just wanted to echo all of your thoughts and comments about this process being very commendable and totally embraced, and a pleasure to work with Mr. Barry and see the evolution of the design and doing this kind of big structures, something that's more fitting with the neighborhood. So we really appreciate that from you and your team. And also just wanted to thank the neighbors, because I think that part of that inclusive design process is getting the feedback from everybody. And everyone's been so involved in sharing their thoughts and concerns, and I think that without that, we wouldn't have gotten to where we are today. So I think one of the things that Mr. Pucherev had brought up earlier was what we can think of in our level, was the question about moving from one owner to five owners. And I think Mr. Lynch, you had added that in sort of that transition of going from one to five, maybe there needs to be more language in place about, you know, the condo association or homeowners association or whatever needs to be kind of established as a result of that. And for us, that's our biggest concern, is just maintaining the level of privacy that we have today with this current property and making sure that there's still some safety in place as a result of the entrance traffic that might happen with, you know, up to ten cars presumably leaving this property. Those are our biggest concerns, and just wanted to make sure that that was, was important. I'm sure that's another thing that we want to say.
Thank you.
We'll come back. But just wanted to thank everyone, but also making that we do still have that question. You know, Mr. Pucherev mentions that there is that potential that if there's five homeowners and they're really invested in the property, that yes, they might take better care of it, but also at the same time, it might strip away some of the things that might be put in place as a result of the homeowners association. So we just wanted to make sure that that language was, you know, if this does get passed, that language is pretty clear. And I know that Rich Bowen, who was an abutter directly to the rear of the property, is concerned with that as well. He sent an email to us from London today, he's out of town, and I forwarded it on to the board, and he wanted to make sure that neighbors could enforce some of the homeowners association.
I don't think you can, actually.
So just to, first, to echo what Frank said, whether you have one owner and a special permit goes on to the property with the building department and ends up on the title with conditions, or whether it goes to five, that in no way lessens the power of that restriction. So to the extent we grant the permit and place restrictions on the property, what they do with it in terms of ownership after the fact will have no bearing on that. I think one thing I'd like to understand is, they mentioned some potential conditions, excuse me, I think we have some in mind, but I don't think we've heard from you necessarily any that they mentioned that you're most concerned with or any others that haven't been mentioned, and I think I'd like to hear that.
The privacy, the lighting, the placement of the AC units. I think one thing that came over from Design Review was the placement of landscaping to create an offer between our property and the neighboring property, just making sure that that's maintained so that if the owners do move in, they can't just completely raise it. Our property sits about three or four feet from the property lines, we're really, really close. That's our nonconformity, so we just want to make sure that we're able to maintain some of that, our structure, that is, it's three or four feet. We just want to make sure that we're able to maintain some of that privacy. So that was probably the biggest one. And...
Did we solve the dumpster issue? Is that, that's gone now? Or?
The conversation, and I think, actually, it was Mr. Bowen, Mr. Bowen sent an email asking if the dumps, because the dumpster that's there currently is up against the back property line. I've owned the property now for about five months, but I think there was always, when I purchased, there was a lot of debris in the back of it, in the back of the property. And I think he was hoping that, as most of us do, they have a couple of collections, whether they do it through a commercial business or through a recycling center, they maintain a couple of barrels in a locker adjacent to it, or even instead of in a dumpster. So we've accommodated that in the design, and certainly that can be part of a condition that...
That there be no dumpster?
Correct.
Yeah.
And maybe this took contrary to kind of our thoughts. It's a half-baker lot, and we've been saying it from the beginning, but we've realized this is probably a losing battle at this point. But it's a half-baker lot, we're putting five units that are roughly the size of ours in the home onto one lot, including parking and presumably some kind of open space. It just feels really jammed, which doesn't feel very fitting when you put, so that's really...
I guess, yeah, I guess that's the one thing, like, I, obviously, I think that the design is much better and part of the process, and there's really nothing that, design-wise, that sticks out to me now. Just the biggest thing is I just, I, and I understand what you said about the idea that the zoning board is not voting on the multifamily use or not. I guess if there was a condition, my condition would be that I don't understand why the multifamily, like, yes, I understand there's five rental units on, but why it's having to be five units? To me, that is going to intensify the use of that site, the nonperforming use of that site, to have, you know, five owners coming and going. I mean, I don't, I don't see why, like, I don't have a problem with multifamily too, whether it's two-family, three-family, but five is just pushing it. And I don't know.
Well, there's five on there now. That's why it doesn't intensify the use.
Right.
The building is bigger, it's forty percent bigger, and we certainly allow that. You know, actually, what they could do, you know, anybody can almost, as long as you meet the setbacks, you can build to the edge of your setbacks. So in Situate, there is no lot coverage bylaw, and some people think that's, you know, a deficiency in our bylaws, and people who like to build big houses think it's just fine. So, you know, I'm like you, I like to have space around me. I probably, as beautiful as this looks, it probably would not be something I'd want to live in, because I just need to have air. But, but it is, again, intensifying it, but it's not, you know, if we're talking seven, a hundred and seventy-five percent, two-hundred percent, you're talking, you're talking pretty big. It's not, you know, a huge, it may sound like a huge increase, but it's actually not. It's reasonable for what we have seen at this board a lot. So, you know, could we condition that they cut it down? I suppose we could, but I don't feel that we need to be compelled, I personally don't feel we need to be compelled to make them. You know, ten bedrooms, it's ten bedrooms now. You know, I think, I mean, that's my feeling on it, so...
Chair, can I weigh in just a little bit on that?
Sure.
So, as the owner investor, I looked at the site, bought it, kind of expecting to keep it as an inventory property, and again, it wasn't until I really get into it, I realized it had deficiencies, like, oh, I should have been a little more due diligent upfront. So the way I looked at it, it could go back to just being an apartment, I could reconstruct it as a five-unit apartment building, but personally, I feel that an ownership project is better than table. That's been supported by other neighbors, that they would rather see it, in fact, that one neighbor said, if you try to make apartments, then you're going to see me really resistant.
Yeah.
Wanted to see ownership, wanted to see people take ownership of these units. So that's, but I can't really market seven hundred square foot units. These are only, they're not huge, eleven hundred square foot. But you kind of hit that threshold where in order for it to be economically viable, you kind of have to get a unit that someone wants to buy.
Right.
And that's really, am I disappointed that I don't have parking for each one of these units? I am, but I knew that that was kind of something we had to give up in order for this to fit into the neighborhood. We're now accommodating all the parking on site. I hear the issue about safety, but the real safety is the tenants are running across that road every day, and they weren't able to walk out of their cars and go into their dwelling unit without going across for a special. I think it's a safer answer than what we had prior. So, again, I just wonder, we, it's, I believe I've evolved into trying to figure what's the right thing to do with this property. I'm pleased with the architectural, ultimately, what we've ended up with here. I understand it's a little bigger, but I don't think I can market units. If I shrink this building down anymore, I don't think they're marketable. They're right at that threshold, to be honest with you.
Right. Yes.
Just to point out the capos, I'm happy, if you reduce the number of units, you could effectively increase the square footage of the units there, so I'm just going to, you're assuming you can make five units.
Right.
Just point that out.
I'm sure, have you, have you thought about that? Do you have four units to make it bigger?
Similar effect on marketability, because you lose the value of that extra unit.
My point.
So, yeah.
I mean, and it did start off with the right of five units, and that's kind of tough to give that up.
Anyone, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Jennifer Kuhn. I live across the street in the affordable housing unit at Twenty Kerry midfield. Mr. Howland is aware of it. 20 Cary Midfield. Mr. Howland is aware of him as on the board. I'm just here because I would oppose the size, I would oppose the board to deny this increase. And I agree with everything that they said. I think the design's beautiful. I just think it's too big for the area that it's in, for the lot that it's on. I don't think that they should be able to increase the size that much just to make a profit on an investment when he didn't do his due diligence. I just don't think that it fits in the neighborhood. It's too much with the parking, the traffic, everything else.
Well, the parking actually is an interesting issue because, you know, right now the tenants are using public parking for private use and it really shouldn't be allowed.
There's a sign to hour in that lot.
I know, and I'm sure it's very well policed.
Does it loud?
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Is there a Pete Giovinini?
Thank you, Pete.
Is there a full basement to these buildings?
I don't know.
Type of foundation?
It's not proposed as a full basement, just a crawl space.
Okay.
Water table might.
Water table, sorry.
Okay. Oh, he said Pete Giovinini. Giovinini. Oh, yeah. What number? Pete, what number are you?
Nine.
Nine.
I just have a comment. I think the design.
Oh, you have to identify yourself.
I can't.
There you go.
She's good.
You lost your thoughts now? Sorry about that.
I can't get over it.
Good.
I think the design is much better, although I, you know, would love to see a picture or photograph them from this angle, but just the whole idea sounds better. But I am having a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that it's so much bigger that there are going to be 10 parking spaces instead of what there are now, which is a hundred or so meters each other. And it's going to fit in the same place. So I'm just having a hard time visualizing.
Okay. Well, two things. If you want to, you know, yeah, pass that back. So everybody, just sort of pass it around, the drawings. There is a parking bylaw in Situate and when you reconstruct a building, you have to have a parking spot for every bedroom onsite for a multifamily building like this. So they are obligated to fit them in and they have done that. And I think in a great location. So it's, you know, it backs up to the library as opposed to their neighbors.
Former library.
You what?
Former library.
Former library. What's there now? Town offices, right?
Deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk. It's a private, oh.
Tony Brady, deputy clerk.
I thought he was a town employee.
No.
Definitely that's it.
Oh, no kidding. Sorry, Mr. Brady. Never, never mind. Yeah. Geez, I always thought it was a town office. Thought it was the deputy tax.
It's a good thing you don't know what that building is.
Yeah, see, a good thing. If I knew, you'd wonder about me, huh? Yeah, no, thank God.
It's a different stuff.
I might have had a client, but I haven't.
Actually, I wonder how.
All right. All right. Any more comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the homeowners association type stuff. Like, how does that happen?
That's a good question.
Well, yeah. Yeah. I don't think we can, we can't dictate. I do not believe we have any power to dictate what's in the homeowners association. We can only say pursuant to the permit, this is the things that have to happen. And then it's up to, you know.
But the question he asked though is how are we going to do that, which is, I've been thinking about here. Because it seems to me we want to be fairly detailed in doing this and I'm not comfortable right now sort of dictating off the top of my head what the conditions for this permit should be.
Okay.
We've got, you know, comments that have come from several different sources and Mr. Barry has graciously, I think, agreed to practically every single one of them. And so I think we can either, you know, sort of highlight them as topics, then whoever's going to write the decision then can flesh them out a little bit more, or we can propose that somebody make a proposal to us, which would mean that everybody would have to come back.
Right.
And
Is that a problem?
And we would go over them.
Just, I think I'm prepared to elaborate on the restrictions. I've been taking some notes.
Okay.
I certainly may have missed one and, you know, I think there's the restrictions that maybe everyone wants and the restrictions that we might want to place and so.
That's what I'm concerned about is that we don't, you know, in a rush to do this.
Taking some notes, I see three and I guess now's a good a time to elaborate on them as any, I think, well, three, I guess, four.
I see three.
A restriction against lighting on the western side of the building.
Do you want to restrict all lighting?
These are, this is what's been proposed. I'm all for whittling down on them, but some measure of restriction on lighting on the western side of the building. Some form of requirement of a maintenance of the current level of plantings on the western boundary of the property. A restriction against the keeping of a dumpster or other open trash receptacle on the property. And then the requirement that any exterior HVAC units are located on the eastern side of the building structure.
Yeah, mechanicals.
Great, yeah. Better terms, yeah, yeah.
So that, again, is on the eastern side.
So would that, well, would that include, I'll go backwards now. Would that include a prohibition against window units and things like that that we should include in there?
No.
There's going to be central air, right?
There would be central.
Essentially. So that's what I'm saying. So.
I think building mechanicals, I think that's a pretty common construction term.
So I think the concern is, is that the people who are living on the west side, if somebody decides to start throwing in air conditioners, it's going to be hanging over their house.
Well, here's my problem with it. What if they want to put a window air conditioner in? I don't want to start restricting people from window air conditioners.
Especially when it meets the side setback. I think that's, we're getting a little heavy-handed with our.
That's probably a fair point. All right. Pull that one back.
This way, I think that, you know, those are the things that they've agreed to. We could just put them in writing to give that protection going forward. Again, it'd be on the deed, so it goes with the property.
Well, what's the, what's the, what's the width of the vegetative buffer that you need to do? Oh, you've got a five foot?
I like the idea that we have current plantings plotted on a plan that's going to become part of the jacket for this building.
Right.
Well, and proposed, and that we require a maintenance of that level. This way, if Bob gets a request for enforcement in three years, he can look at this plan and make a judgment call as to whether there's substantially less.
Here's my problem with that. I'm always trying to think of the, what happens when a tree falls down that's, you know, 30 feet high? Does he have to replant a 30-foot high tree?
I think that we have to give Bob some discretion there and if he replants a tree that's going to grow to that height, is he compliant? I mean.
I mean, that's, that's my problem with doing something too specific. It is.
There's an argument against the restriction at all.
Right.
You know, there is an argument that if someone wants privacy, they could plant on their property line. So I'm not arguing for the restriction, just trying to elaborate it, especially given that I think we have a landowner who's open to it.
I agree. I agree. I just don't want something that is going to, you know, he's all of a sudden paying $200,000 to replace trees that came down in a microburst.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that. It says a five-foot wide landscape buffer.
Yeah.
You probably should have height too, but.
Yeah.
If I could respond to Anthony's comment for myself and my successors in this position, the building office really isn't charged with monitoring landscape or the condition of landscaping.
Just to clarify, not monitoring, but to the extent you get a request for enforcement, I just like the idea of you having something.
I'm not sure how or what aspect of the building code would allow us to enforce it. I mean, there may be an enforcement process and I'm not saying that's not a good idea.
It would have to be under the zoning bylaw.
Something like that.
Yeah, you'd be enforcing a special permit condition, that's all. I mean.
Right, right. And that may well be.
And we've done it in, I can remember one of the 50-foot lot.
We have. We have created buffer zones, but I don't think we've been overly specific about what's in it.
I think we had that same debate in that, yeah. So we've got to, we've got to, you know, say there shall be this type of a planting, it'll be of a certain size and that's it.
Yeah. Yes. Did you have a suggestion?
I'm sorry, could I just ask if they would consider a fence, which is a more permanent structure, but I don't know that they're prepared to respond to that. Obviously, what I'm trying to attempt is to create some buffer there to make them more comfortable with what we're doing and I'm open to suggestions.
Right. The problem is, is if we write it in the permit, it's not suggested anymore. It's, this is what you got to do.
Right. I have no problem with doing either. I guess.
Right.
You'd just like an answer.
And I can see how it can be challenged and defined and to enforce it, sure.
And there's an argument to be made that if we put the plantings in and then the party want a fence later on, why should they have to come back to us for something that's otherwise within the code and it's what they both want?
I don't think they should, I don't think, you know, they don't have to ask us to put a fence up.
Technically, they have to ask us to not maintain the plantings if required, which is painful. But anyway, to keep this moving, if we put the privacy aside for a second, a restriction against lighting, some measure of lighting, a restriction against dumpsters.
Hang on. Can I ask you about the lighting? So I didn't print all my emails here, but I think Mr. Bowen was concerned about the lighting as well. And just so happened to be reading the lighting provision in Stockbridge Road, I think it was.
Yeah.
Which has language, not Stockbridge Road, it's Stock, you know, the 40B.
Yeah.
The, we borrow that language for the rest of the exterior lighting, basically saying that the lighting will go down and shall not be pointed, that type of thing.
What is it called?
Yeah.
Down lighting.
Down lighting.
With a cutoff shield.
Yeah.
So, and so it doesn't, it does not escape the.
Lights spill over at the property line.
Yeah. Which I think ought to be a bylaw.
Didn't work.
Oh, huh?
It didn't work.
It doesn't work?
Yeah, exactly proposed. Anyway, let's move on.
All right, all right. Well, we've got four things.
We've got another question from the audience.
Yes.
I have a question about the lighting. So because it is a multifamily, is there any lighting restrictions that they're, that they have to accommodate to that would, I guess.
Like what?
That, I don't know, like you must have two floodlights per unit. Yeah, like a code or something.
No, that's what we're trying to kind of to put that down now so the lighting's not everywhere. And they probably have different task lighting to get them walkway or whatever, but the spotlights and.
Walkway and the depth of lighting at the address of the building.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would also, as long as we're on that, distinguish between exterior lighting and interior lighting, clearly the people within the building can have lights on which will then shine out the windows.
Right. Well, right. All exterior lighting.
Yeah.
Okay, we've talked about lighting, privacy landscaping buffer, no exterior dumpsters and all mechanicals shall be placed on the eastern side of the building. Anything else that we?
Is the, are the barrel areas on the plan, Greg?
No, it would be interior of the building.
Interior of the building?
Meaning probably on the porch areas, the locker.
Okay. So if we just said that provision will be made for interior storage of, temporary storage of garbage.
This just occurred to me that we've also committed to the design review that there are a couple aesthetic, very minor things that they had requested. They, we were going to copy them in a final iteration. We just received their approval last week, but we did commit to send a signed final set of architecturals to them and that would be more defined, that locker would be more defined in that final set of plans. But that would be conditioned, that would be the final architecture.
So we're going to get that from the, from the design review committee?
We committed to them that we would give them a final set of drawings that would incorporate.
Okay. So that's what we should be approving rather than this, right?
No, I don't think we typically approve architecturals, right? It's.
We have a right to. We absolutely have a right to, under the bylaw, but.
But I think we could leave that to the design review and let them.
Yeah. Well, I would certainly like, do you have small copies of these? Because it needs to be understood that this is, you know, basically what we're approving. So you don't come in with Frank Lloyd Wright.
This is the plan that was approved.
Yeah.
For, again, the little nuanced things that the board said, would you please copy some final set of plans with all of them?
I think that's a matter of pride as opposed to anything else, that they really, you know, this is, you know, a good, a good thing, so.
The plans don't, they don't.
They're different.
The side.
Yeah, they're side to side. They're different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to add our last little bit there because we know that there's going to be a lot of construction right next to us. Again, our property, like, right near the property line, that just, you know, just for the record, we have observed an intermittent stream and it's, you know, an environmental specialist, he has observed it, it has gone through our property. If there's any flooding or conditions of that sort, there's no other reason for it other than the reconstruction that happens on this property. So we just wanted to mention that for the record.
Yeah. They have, there's all kinds of rules they have to deal with as they're, as they're building with barriers and hay bales and silk things or whatever.
Conservation.
Silk pillowcases and stuff like that. So that'll, that will be all, once they get their permit, they have to be very careful about that and debris from the demolition. Have you already gone for the demolition permit?
I haven't.
Okay. Is that?
The historic commissioning?
Yeah, because you have to wait a year for that, right?
No, they deemed so, not historically.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not historically significant.
Okay. All right.
That was my first thought.
Okay. All right.
So I'm reading Mr. Bowen's comments.
What did he say?
He wanted also on his border, a fence and vegetative border.
I haven't read that email.
You have?
I have not.
You have not? Okay. So what's the issue?
So I would, I would ask the board if they're conditioning, I would ask that if I'd be either one or the other, I would put a fence and vegetation, I would be willing to do one or the other.
I can understand. Have you guys figured out whether you want a fence or otherwise?
We're so new to this. I mean, we moved into our house in August.
I'm sorry.
And it's still close to our property line.
I just wanted to add something about when you guys work out language for the restrictions on, if it is a state of border, is that area has not, because there was some talk about like language about maintaining current plantings and something, I would like to point out that most of the property line of this site has been neglected for a long, long time and it's mostly invasive species, like multi-floral rose, norway maples, some pretty big ones and just a bunch of crap plants that also like spill over this property line and stone walls. Our landscape and I'm always cutting fence out. I don't think any of that should be maintained. I think it should be tastefully re-landscaped, but I don't think any of the invasive species or current plantings that are just, in my opinion, crap should be, don't put that as a restriction.
No crap? I've been asked, first time, I'll be first. No crap.
Depends on whether this property's doing or discussing with the owner.
Which is the best thing.
About taking on some of the norway maples and some of the bad trees that are liable to fall down any day and just suck hangings for maintenance.
You know, it just feels like, it feels like we're in the honeymoon and please let the marriage be just as strong. Because, you know, there's all this great, it's just very, it's awesome, to tell you the truth. I don't mean to make fun of it, but, you know. So that's why I think we need to be, just maintain a, you know, landscape five-foot buffer, fairly broad, you know. That's what I think. You know, I don't want to get into too much detail. It's going to restrict getting rid of the junk and bringing out nice plantings. So that's, that would be my take on it.
So that would be on the side and the back?
The side and the back.
Yeah, I think indicated someone on the side already.
Do you see more fence?
Yeah, in a back. Yeah, in the back, yeah.
Pardon me?
Or fence.
More fence?
Or fence to the rear.
Well, I, it, it sounds to me like, a fence can be an expensive item. Well, I mean, if you can work out something with, with Mr. Bowen, he's not-
I'm happy to work, that's what I said, if you put work, I'm happy to engage Mr. Bowen, and he can, we can have a conversation on what's the right application.
And then we'll put it in the permit when we finalize this?
If we said, Sarah's language for, the note I have is maintenance of a five-foot landscape buffer or fence along the western and rear property lines.
Yeah, and the-
I don't think they want a fence to the west. That's a problem.
Right. I think I need to say that I'm not so sure, and a abutter should have a right to restrict against a fence that is otherwise within the bylaw.
Well, true, but he's agreeing to the landscape.
Yeah, but they could still-
I think he'd like the option for both, and-
Well, I didn't get that. I thought that was just to the rear.
I mean, ultimately, of course, I'm trying to accommodate the abutters on both sides.
Right.
And I think, and I'm also hoping that we can have a decision tonight, so I'm trying to make it so that if we put the or in there-
Right.
It would give us that option.
Bottom line, it really comes down to, the applicant is proposing a project which is going to have to be marketable, it's going to have to look nice, that's going to require that side yard next to the Bornsteins to be cleaned up, the invasive species probably pulled out, and some plantings put in that will intend to mature in the, in the right fashion. The property owners will then be responsible for maintaining them. The easements, and, you know, if we get into too restrictive language and easements, et cetera, enforcement, I can tell you from personal experiences, a complicated process. And even with deeded easements that are, I was trying to look at, look up some of the issues that came up. So, I think it's better to try to make this, our permitting indicate that a buffer zone, a vegetative box, buffer zone and/or fence, because it's available by right, it's, there's no reason to vacate that right for the future property owners as well. That's, I don't think the Bornsteins have any intention of doing anything horrible on that side of their property, but if, if some future owner decided to start hanging laundry there, the owners of the five unit might wish to put a fence up. It would have to be only six foot, and et cetera, et cetera, but I think they should have that right. I just don't want, the design review has been a very good process, let's not turn it into a process that we are going to complicate by too restrictive language.
I agree.
It's, it's, bottom line is, we're neighbors, and neighbors tend to work well. Great opportunity when there's a, when new construction is going on, particularly to talk about, you know, landscaping, et cetera.
Does Jovanini, you had your hand raised?
No.
No?
Oh, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think this comes down to that, I think that we're just concerned of the size.
Right.
And that we're trying to set up a lot of barriers, buffers, this or that, to prevent it. So, we're trying to, like, actually hide it? No. I mean, it's beautiful, but is it gonna look like that? Probably not. It's just, it's too big, is what we're trying to, you know, forty percent more-
Right.
Than what's there. So, I think that the board needs to consider that.
Well, I, I know I have, and, you know, and it's difficult, it's always difficult when things get bigger, always, always, always. But, all right, does somebody want to do a motion?
I have a motion. And I'll, I promise I'll get to the detrimental word.
Good work.
Motion to grant the special permit request of JMGH Family Realty Trust for the property at ninety-three through ninety-seven First Parish Road in Situate, allow the raising and reconstructing of a five-unit, ten-bedroom, multifamily dwelling with ten parking spaces on site, as shown on the plan submitted with the application dated February nineteenth of sixteen and last revised seven nineteen of sixteen. End motion that the board find that any intensification of the non-conforming front yard setback and increase in the square footage of the property is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And further, to grant that special permit with the following restrictions. Please interrupt if you think it's necessary. Restriction one being a requirement that any exterior lighting be downlighting with cutoffs, so as the lighting will not spill over the adjacent property lines. Requirement number two being the maintenance of a landscape buffer of five feet in width or a fence along the western and rear property lines for the purpose of privacy. The third requirement being that no dumpster or other mass or communal open trash receptacle be maintained on the property. And the fourth requirement being that building mechanicals, which is to include all HVAC units, be located on the eastern side of the building.
Just a one quick change on the dumpsters, just no permanent dumpsters?
That's probably a good idea.
If they walk down the road, if they're gonna bring in a dumpster to do something that-
So, requirement number three being that no permanent dumpsters or communal open trash receptacles be located on the property.
And on the lighting, I think there was going to be no exterior lighting on the west side?
No, I-
We'll have to check with the exit side.
My, my motion's for that-
There's gonna be an exit on the west side?
It be downlighting to the extent that it not cross the property line.
You may, you may want some for security reasons, that's the problem.
I think that's-
Okay, I wanna put a patio over there one day, especially if they have a nice fence, I, yeah.
All right.
I agree. Um-
Thank you.
Any, any revision of that?
Nope.
I wasn't at the April meeting, so I won't be voting on it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, no revision? You're good?
Good.
All right. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And again, I just want to thank Mr. Barry and all of the neighbors and abutters for participating in this project. I think it is a thousand percent improvement for what you first brought to us. I am anxious to see it built and see how it comes out. And, you know.
And also to the abutters, we've seen a lot of applications with multiple objections. This was probably the most respectful and professional that I've seen in a number of years.
And well, well articulated for all your concerns, and we hope, we hope we've maintained the best we could for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Man, I abstained because I wasn't at the April meeting.
We were still gonna write the decision, right?
Oh, and you know what, those, we're gonna need copies of the site plans, or the architecturals for the file, because that should be included in the decision, in accord with the architecturals.
Okay.
It's got to, because that's what he's agreed to. Hey, what's that face?
I don't think that that's our purview. I think we had to-
It is, you're wrong.
Refer them to design review.
No.
I think we just take a copy of the plan.
I can read you.
I don't think it's in the decision.
It is, it's gotta be.
Just a copy of the plan. That way we have a reply.
That'd be great, thank you.
Modification of exterior features or appearance of structure, conditions of approval, Board of Abil's may impose conditions, safeguards, limitations.
All right, at the very least, we, next time, we should include that in the decision before we vote on it.
Yeah, so.
But great.
Yeah, so that's good. Oh, my God, we're only two down. This is slow tonight.
Oh, no, we gotta withdraw.
We're just hitting our stride.
Oh, yay, we just, we just jumped to number three, four. Okay, I'm sorry, if anybody was waiting for one thirty-one Glades Road, they've withdrawn. So, they've left the building. So, we're up to our fourth application. Annie, I didn't see that. You have that file? Well, so I don't have to interrupt you. Anthony, could you grab a file from Annie there?
Of course.
Who's gonna write that?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll take a shot at the first draft.
We've got a chunk of it written already, the notes.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. Ashley Warner, my host Michael Warner.
Hi.
So, it's our first time in front of you guys. Basically, we live on Dayton Road. We are looking to construct an addition, a two-story addition, with a four hundred and sixty-two foot footprint, on top of our existing, what is it, eight hundred and on top of our current eight hundred eighty-seven existing. So, our application is basically, we are currently non-conforming. So, we are non-performing because we are currently set back thirteen feet from the front. Our present zoning district is R3, so our required front step back is thirty feet. Our existing step back is thirteen feet. Additionally, we have a seventy-five foot frontage instead of one hundred, so we're not a thousand square feet conforming lot, we are a seventy-five hundred square foot conforming lot. We do have a engineer certified, um, site map, from nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-four, C.D. Humphrey, Paul D. Cantor works the engineering on this. So, we do have that. In addition, our architect has provided a document which you guys have in front of you, and I'm just kind of pulling in front of me. You've got a larger version of this in front of you? Yeah. And so, this is what our architect has put together to basically outline all the specifics. So, basically, our required frontage, you know, our required frontage is one hundred feet, our existing is seventy-five. Our proposed, the existing remains the same. Our front yard setback is thirty feet, our existing is thirteen feet. Our proposed would be thirteen feet. So, the addition would actually step back a bit, six feet. However, our architect did draw in a porch that has a shed.
Oh, okay.
So, the setback of the dwelling or the new structure would be six foot back from that, so approximately eighteen feet from our property line, however, there is the covered porch that is going to be aligned with current footprint. Our rear yard setbacks are currently twenty feet, they're required as twenty feet, and the proposed would be unchanged at twenty feet. And so, again, just to kind of put out the facts, the existing footprint square foot is eight hundred eighty-seven square feet. Our proposed addition footprint would be an additional four hundred and sixty-two square feet, and that is an increase of our footprint of thirty-four percent.
The, the, the question, though, is the gross square footage of livable space, not the footprint. Can you tell us those numbers?
Yes, so just times two. So, it's a-
Exactly, times two for both.
Exactly, times two. Four in the addition of four hundred and sixty-two, fifty-four.
What is the, what is the square footage of the addition, I'm sorry?
It's four hundred and sixty-two thousand six.
So, the percentage maintains?
Yeah.
The percentage maintains, so thirty-four percent increase from our existing.
And I think the, unless I'm missing something, the lot width is, is not a hundred feet, it's seventy-five.
No, seventy-five.
Oh, it's a corner lot. All right, thank you, Avery.
But, but, the problem is, it is a corner lot.
It is a corner lot, so there's-
But don't, you gotta go from the front?
Well, you have two front yards.
Right.
Two front yards. We're not changing anything on nothing.
Go ahead.
Just the Dayton side. So, I've prepared a lot of different documentation, one that you guys have, another exhibit A, I guess I called it, the average of Dayton Road neighbor setbacks from the street. So, basically, what I did is, me and my kids, we've got caught in the pictures, and basically, my scientific method was to kind of propose that, yes, I'm only thirteen feet back from my property line, and so are my neighbors. I just have their exact property line, so I took a picture from my door to the street, snapped a picture of the actual footage, went to my neighbor, saw the street, had a door, and did a kind of follow my neighbors, with the two hundred feet, just to kind of say, hey. So, basically, like, that was my property's twenty-three from the street. Again, that was the only apples-to-apples comparison I had out of your site.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
You can sit down, and your husband can sit, sit down if you want.
I'm starting to feel nervous.
It's like in a poet's court.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, so-
Court?
Right. So, a couple of things. First of all, I noticed in your application, it said that your house was built in nineteen eighty-nine.
Yes.
Which, which is a problem for us.
Okay.
Not an insurmountable problem because of what Annie did. So, so what I said there, and if a house is built in nineteen eighty-nine, it doesn't comply with the setbacks, there's gotta be a reason, and I want to know why. So, I asked Annie to look and see if there had been a prior zoning decision, and what she did was went down into the archives and got your old, your old file. And your house was originally built in nineteen ten.
Okay.
Okay?
And burnt down, right?
What?
And from what I understand, it burnt down at its foundation.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to it. You probably know more about that. Alls I can tell you is that in nineteen eighty-nine, they rebuilt it.
Yeah.
It, yeah, it was totaled by fire, May twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-eight. Okay? So, that's good, because without that information, we couldn't even be talking to you about giving you a special permit, because it doesn't comply, we can't prove that it was built prior to the, but this does. And so, you can thank Annie for that. Okay.
My kids love Annie.
You have a demo permit issued June first, eighty-eight.
Yeah, and so it was, so it was rebuilt. So, that's good. The only, so the only other problem I have, and which is why she brought the whole file, is that the, the certified plan needs to be a certified plot plan, because we have to show that, you know, it, your house sits where it says it sits.
Because this is, because this is old?
Yeah, the architect just doesn't get to do it.
No, I know, but this, what you're saying is, this is too old?
It's not too old, it just is-
I didn't know the one from seventy-four.
The one from seventy-four, but it was, the house was rebuilt in eighty-eight. So, you have to, you can't-
I would agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So-
This plot plan, sure.
But that's by an architect. An architect doesn't have the-
I don't know the answer to that.
Am I off base on that?
No, I think you're, you're probably correct. I'm sure that the architect went from the nineteen seventy-four plan with no reason to think the house wasn't built on its original footprint.
Yeah, and I'm trying to find it.
There's no proof that I've seen of that. I haven't looked through that file.
Did you have looked?
No, I didn't.
You know what, maybe you could even find it faster. Can I give, pass it to you?
Yeah.
Because you'd probably know what you were looking for. Here's the, here's all that.
The investigation you did of measuring to the paved way, one of the challenges is the layout of the paved, the layout and the paved way are two different things. So, the roadway may actually be a good deal closer. It probably is, in the sense that you were getting a twenty-foot measurement or something, and this was, this is saying thirteen, because we're suggesting that the house is still on the same spot. Yeah.
Could be closer, could be farther.
But, again, we don't like to try to create expenses for people, but it could be to your advantage to have a, you may, you may have to have a plot plan done by a surveyor. The survey team could probably look at it and tell you in a, relatively quickly, in a two-hundred-foot between ways, whether or not there's an average setback that applies, or at least say it's not worth the effort to do it. They're pretty knowledgeable in that way.
And that would be somebody like Mr. Morris, who was here.
Yes, right. I think I've seen already, we're saying, we obviously tried to just say, hey, like, we've got this in hand. We talked to Bob, I was like, you know, I know I can't make this, I knew you were gonna go and phone board, but we kind of said, you know what, let's have the architect draw something up, using what we had in hand as they died, and say, you know, in hand, if these work, if not, then, hey, you know what, at least it was only two hundred dollars to do that, not, I didn't want to throw a couple grand out if I didn't have to.
Right. I hope it doesn't cost that much.
He did a pretty good job here.
Oh, no, he's shaking his head. Oh, he's still here, I did not know.
And Greg would know better than I, but they did a pretty good job here for an architectural plan, and they have the calls. It might be worth, not, all business should go to Mr. Morris, he's fantastic, but it might be worth calling your architect and seeing if they have someone that they work with regularly who could certify this plan or utilize some of this work in getting us the plan that we want. Because, but for the lack of that certification, this is better than just your average architectural plan.
Yeah, like, I thought he did a great job. And Annie was awesome. She was like, she showed me something. I had literally had that one little sheet of paper from the 70s. And she's like, look at this huge thing that was rejected last week. She's like, all you need is, you know, this data. So, I made sure that I had all my data points for Jonathan. He did a great job kind of showing existing based on that. And he knows setting here, you know, based on this other...
Aprilia may be able to jump this to a plan that we can accept somewhat easily.
And the good news is, you may, there's an awful lot of information here. I think you'll probably walk away from this meeting with a pretty good idea of what the board is thinking. Any questions we have, we can give them to you now. You'll know, you'll hear about from your neighbors, et cetera. So, you've done a great job getting us, getting here. Don't get discouraged.
Does it, you find anything there, Bob?
No, there really isn't anything you can tie it to the new...
Location. Okay. So...
I don't know.
You guys are in town, sort of?
We're in town.
Okay.
So, I have a...
Go to help, we'll help us there.
I have...
1980, 88 something.
Yeah.
Maybe they reattached, maybe they don't. But are we able to, to the extent we wanted to grant the special permit, to grant the special permit conditioned on the receipt in the file of a plan which matches the dimensions shown on this architectural plan?
Well, I think we can, yeah. I think we could grant it, but I think that we should condition it on something that it's no less than, if not...
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's what I mean, that's my question.
It's no less than the dimensions as shown. And if not, then we can...
Yeah, that there be no reductions in any of the...
Right, and if not, well, we, you know, on the other...
Then we'd have to, then we'd probably have to revisit it, right?
Yeah, we'd have to revisit it. How long would a site plan take, Greg? 2 months?
2 weeks.
Oh, 2 weeks. Either that, this is what we can do. Either that, or you can come back next month. We can continue it for a month, so you can get your plot plan and come back, and then everybody, all your ducks will be a row, and you, you know. I don't think anybody on the board, if you take sort of the temperature, has got a problem with it. It's just that we need to make sure everything's in line, where it needs to be.
Are we, we're extending a non-conformity in the front yard setback?
Right.
It's an intensification.
It is. But doesn't create any new ones.
It's a Gale question. And I suspect that if there were any butters that were gonna come, because it was notice for tonight.
We haven't asked.
I know we haven't asked, that's my point to the chair, is that we should probably address that type, that mail, rather than...
Just to reiterate again, for their sake of coming back and for the sake of our docket.
Yes.
Can we not make a decision now contingent upon our receipt in the next 3 weeks of a site plan that is, has no less of dimensions than are shown on this architectural drawing? It looks pretty good to me that they're gonna get a site plan that matches this to the 10th of a foot. You know, again, contingent on that, I don't see a reason why we can't vote now contingent on this plan showing up as a site plan.
I think we could probably fashion something.
Yeah. Even if, even if then we vote next week that, or note on the record that we got an acceptable site plan, they might not have to come back, and we might not have to reopen a full hearing.
We just don't have to write a decision until...
Right, until we get it.
Is case law that we reference on non-conformities? That's not...
This is Annie's.
Sometimes we get away, we get away with a lot of jargon, and applicants are looking at us like...
You're not any closer to the street, but there's more house too close to the street. So, that's where we call it an intensification. We make a determination.
But if it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than you got now, then we'll let you do it. So, I think, okay.
And we have, I don't know if you're, if you want to see, what does it look like, before and after?
Always like to see.
So, I'll show you the existing. This is the existing view from Dayton Road. So, this is just a side, so you can kind of not pay attention to that right now. This is where you pull up into the driveway. It goes from this. And again, this is facing my neighborhood, my house. So, this door changes into this little chute back here. And then the set, the house is actually set back, the new addition is set back about 6 feet. And then from right side, it's just...
You might kind of, we have a camera, and sort of you kind of, anybody at home? All your neighbors that didn't come, that are still watching? This is what they're doing.
Yes. Oh, perfect.
Okay.
That was good.
Very nice. I think it'll be a nice addition for your house, for your family. Okay, so, any, anybody wish to be heard in the audience on this? Yes?
My name's Mike Thompson. I'm the 16 Dayton Road, so indirect neighbor. First of all, I'm very excited for this. I'm supporting, fully in, but it's gonna be a good addition to the neighborhood. I happen to be the old GIS person here in the town, and also work for NOS, so I have advantage of looking at some aerial photo work and some good LiDAR data at 500 meter resolution for the area. I'm not in any way trying to stop or prevent. I'm actually supporting. I just know that there's some sort of reasonable use doctrine that's out there that talks about movement of superficial water. I don't think it's gonna need to be a problem. I've prepared, you know, a whole bunch of 3D fire rounds and LiDAR data maps, if that's helpful to hand out to the group if people wanted.
Sure.
And animations and stuff like that. But I think it is a wonderful project, and we're looking forward to it. Yes, actually, like, right, every house on the street is set pretty close to the road. I guess just a question to the board, if I could.
Sure.
Does this development at all affect anything that would be restricted towards me doing work in my yard? I guess since the setback isn't changing, they're still 8 feet away from my property line.
No, if I'm reading you right, if you wanted to come in and increase the size of your house, the analysis would be the same. We'd look at the same things. I know you were here for the other, you know, sometimes people think that you're making things too big, and so, that's always a concern. This looks like it's a house that's pretty, in keeping from your, from your little perspective here, in keeping with a lot of the houses in the neighborhood.
Yes.
And, no, the only, and I don't know when, when does the stormwater bylaw take effect? When you do what?
If you increase the impervious area on your property by more than 25 percent.
Okay.
Which, this, this may, may do that. I haven't looked at it from that, from that light. But it would probably be an administrative review. It wouldn't have to go before the planning board.
And really, what that is, is that the town has voted in a bylaw that is designed to prevent you building on your property and causing runoff from your property onto your neighbors. And if, Mike, we're gonna do that to him, and he was more than 25 percent, he'd have to make sure that it wasn't running onto yours and people next door to him, so...
You're bound by your own setbacks, not theirs.
Thank you. And I, I, again, I'm a public supporter of this. I'm just curious, so if, so it's, at some point, somebody looks at that site plan, see about the superficial water, sort of thing?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That will definitely go to review before the town planner. And if it's over 25 percent, I mean, we'll do that calculation. But it looks like it may well, maybe, just from what I've seen.
Yeah, we have an increase. What is the, did we talk...
34 percent.
Okay, 34 percent, okay.
But we would have to count, for instance, if there's a paved driveway existing, that's gonna change the percentage of increase, that sort of thing.
Right.
It's all impervious, not just the, not just the buildings themselves.
Got it, okay.
Go grab a driveway.
Right. If you really like it pretty, go show. There you go. So, Anthony, you could starve the motions tonight.
Just making motions, yeah. Motion that the board grant the application of Ashley and Michael Warner of 20 Dayton Road, for the property of 20 Dayton Road, to allow the construction of a proposed 2-story addition at their property, and to find that any intensification of the existing frontage and front yard setbacks, non-conformities, are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and to condition the granting of said permit on the board's receipt prior to its next meeting on August... You're trying to do it in your head. There you go. On August 18, receipt of a site plan certified by an engineer. Is that the proper term?
Yes.
Certified by an engineer, which shows setbacks which are consistent or at least in no way exceeding the setbacks shown on the architectural plan submitted with the application.
No, no, less than.
Yes, so setbacks, well, not setbacks which are less, yeah.
Violations exceeding.
Exceeding in their violating or non-conforming nature.
It should show all the dimension setbacks, but I agree with you, yeah.
Which actually, the architectural plan does.
It does a pretty good job of it.
We just need it to be certified by an engineer.
Existing and proposed setbacks.
Right.
Yes, the plan should show all existing and proposed setbacks.
Second?
Second? You said? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Annie, for getting that. I'm passing it back to you. I think so.
Do I need to do anything with the water thing that we talked about?
Not right now.
That will be taken care of when you apply for help.
You're welcome.
So, what would we, would we just, would we confirm on the record next month that we've received, or no, or...
We don't have to.
Great.
We don't have to put it on the record, it just happens. Oh, Annie Burekha? While Annie's, while Annie's taking a quick break, I'll read the next one. The fifth application is Whitecrest Realty LLC/Charles Fagan of Post Office Box 43, Green Bush, Mass., requesting a special permit under Section 420, parentheses 3, and Section 200, which is the definitions of the Situate zoning bylaws to construct a microbrewery at 6 Old Country Way, Situate, Mass., which is the assessor's map, 53 Block 4, Parcel 8. Hi. So, at the very outset, oh, we have to wait for Annie. No, we can't. Yeah, we have to go back.
You, too?
Yeah.
How did you live right there?
Oh, my shot is...
Ah, okay.
Actually, I sold it.
Oh, really? You should probably read this. Well, I think many of us would have to, the town would have trouble finding a quote.
He's right. Who's gonna write that decision? The 20 Dayton Road.
Do you think that decision makes me?
I can do it.
Want to shoot for who opens it up? I'll do it, I got it. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true. Right, and you're here? Okay. Actually, that's me, too. Easeman? Yeah, I own a property, but there's a man who's Easeman that goes with me. Just wait for a second. She should be there.
Wish we had a beer while we were waiting. Maybe soon. My husband's cousin just, and his son-in-law and daughter opened a microbrewery on Monhegan Island in Maine. Yeah, good stuff. Monhegan Island Brewery. Yeah, he used to be the brewer for Marshall Wharf Brewery up in Maine. Okay, so, we're back. I read the application. So, kind of, we're ready to get going here. Before we get started, I will be recusing myself because I am right across the street of Butter. So, I think it's best I step off.
And I as well, because I am next door of Butter.
Wow. Stealthy crew now.
Yeah, that's it. You could do worse, I'll tell you.
Who are you?
Chair. You're the chair, brother.
Oh, boy, oh, boy. Then they're done that. All right, I guess, gave us your presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna give a brief introduction. My name's Frank Colfoyes. I'm an attorney licensed to practice Law &amp; Home in Massachusetts. I'm a resident of Situate, and with an office in Marshfield. I'm here representing Whitecrest Realty LLC as the owner of 6 Old Country Way in Situate. With me this evening is Chick Fagan, who is the manager and member of Whitecrest Realty LLC. Alan McCloud, who's the architect for the project. We've got Matt Elder, who's a representative of Untold Brewing LLC, who's the tenant for the property. And Greg Morris is here as the engineer for the project. The purpose we're here tonight, I'm just gonna be brief, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Greg. I'm sure you have questions, so you don't wanna hit for me for too long. But the purpose is, we're having a special permit application for the use of the facility as a microbrewery pursuant to Section 423 of the zoning bylaws. So, it's our position that we meet the use criteria as set forth in the bylaws in Section 950.3 permitting the use of this. This project is dimensionally compliant, so this is a used special permit. You probably know that the property is located in this general business district. It's part of the Green Bush Overlake District. And right from the bylaws, the purpose of the Overlake District is to quote, "Promote opportunities for local, small-scale businesses," end quote. In this case, we've got a local landlord, we've got a local tenant, both residents of Situate, and we have a small microbrewery business, which is exactly and precisely what was intended in the zoning bylaws for this Green Bush Overlake District. The zoning change took place in November, November 2 of 2015, at the town meeting, to allow the use of a microbrewery by special permit in the Green Bush, a general business zone. And that was unanimously approved at the town meeting. And prior to and since that time, we've done a lot of work with the boards and have met with, I would characterize as overwhelmingly support from the town and the boards to Dayton Road. Just to give you a little bit of background that's happened so far, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Greg. In preparation for this, there's had to be a few changes to the site. One is, the home that is there at 6 Old Country Way went before the historic commission One is, the home that is there at 6 Old Countryway, went before the historic commission and received the permission to raise the building. However, Chick has entered into arrangement where the building is going to be relocated to an abutting property not far away, and so we're able to save that building, which is an older building in town, and a nice one, and it'll remain in that area, which is a positive thing, even though we do have the right to raise it. We also have secured and made a deal to bring the old schoolhouse that is part of the Fitzmill area there, that's an historical building that goes back, how many years, check, 1860? 1860. That is going to be relocated to the site, and is going to be part of this site. So, we're able to do some things that I think are really positive in terms of historical buildings, and that's going to be restored, it's going to be a great part of this project. And, you know, we've designed, through Alan and Greg, a really attractive and functional building, and a site that meets the specific criteria of the tenant that's going in there. So, I'm going to turn it over to Greg now, just to kind of go through the site and whatever, but, you know, the town of Situate needs to encourage businesses, it's exactly what is being proposed here, is exactly the use that this area is for, as quoted in the bylaws, and so, you know, we feel confident, and we urge you folks to give us a special permit for the use of a microbrewery right in this area, where I think it will be a benefit to the Greenbush area. Greg?
Good evening. Greg Morse, registered engineer. We had submitted a comprehensive site plan package, this is actually going before the planning board, they're the ones charged with the full site plan review process, as Attorney Colepoys pointed out, we're here really for the use. But, I'm going to flip to page two, briefly go over the existing site, and then I'll show you the proposed layout, some renderings of the brewery itself, the property, 6 Old Countryway, Countryway is at the bottom of the plan. This is a half-acre lot, 20,000 square feet, entirely upland planned area. It is abutted to the north by Mr. Hallen's property, commercial contractor, building. The Situate storage facility to the south and to the east, and then the Fagan residence and woodworking shop to the south and to the west. Existing house on the property, again, is going to be relocated to another property in the Greenbush neighborhood. Flipping to page three of our site plan shows our proposed layout for the microbrewery facility. The layout, the building itself is actually kind of two buildings we're putting together to make this proposal. We're constructing a 100-foot-long by 42-foot-wide building in the back, this would be the primary brewing facility, or of a brewing facility you would have. And then the front, this is the 25-foot by 35-foot schoolhouse, and that's a stick-framed building that we're going to relocate from the Fitzmill property, and connect it with a proposed vestibule over to the larger brewery building. Parking is accessed on the northern side of the site, we're providing access to a parking lot with a total of 17 parking spaces, we're providing access around to the back of the brewery building, where we would have doors for deliveries or export of waste facilities. We have onsite dumpster facilities, we're serviced by public utilities, gas, water, sewer. We have a couple of architectural renderings that I'm going to put on the board here. The first rendering is looking at the facility from the north, looking in this direction toward the site, you would see the schoolhouse building here in the front, and then the brewery facility behind it, okay? The next picture that I'll put up is looking at it from the south, looking in this direction for the audience. This is the second... ...which is looking at it in this direction here, from the southwest, where what you see is, you see the schoolhouse building, the brewery with the vestibule, and you see the patio that we're proposing as well. This facility is a beer brewing facility, it's not a food establishment, there will be a tasting room, from what I understand. I'll pass these around for your closer inspection. That's the general site layout, we will be going before the planning board, we had our first initial design review committee meeting, they did have some comments, we'll be addressing those when we land in board.
We have plenty of people to answer any questions, but we're not going to bore you with further presentations, I think it's easier just for you to fire away if you have any questions upon us.
So, I guess, just to the... It looks as if the purpose of the schoolhouse building and the patio area is for some measure of retail, tasting, sale. Is it... I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that, and understand that.
Yeah, I can speak to that, yeah, so the large building back for production.
Sure.
There will be a smaller taproom area in that building that connects to the schoolhouse, but the schoolhouse will be primarily for customers and patrons to come, enjoy beer on-premise, serve from the bar, and really hang out. And that's, Greg said, it's a beer-only establishment, so no food will be served onsite, so we're really focusing just on what we serve.
No snacks?
No snacks, I'm sorry, I have this over with the board of health, we are allowed to let people bring food to the brewery from outside, so the idea is that, you know, form partnerships with restaurants in Situate, and have some sort of delivery, or just encourage people to use the restaurants in the area.
The extent, one day, a food truck takes up one of those parking spots, it certainly happened before, at other lake establishments.
Are you going to sell from there, too? Sell cases, or six-packs?
Yes, there'll be service of beer on-premise, but also sale of bottles and cans and browsers, which is a half-down usable jug, take off premises, those can't be consumed off-premise.
Any further production for further shipment off-premises, or is it a plan that all the beer will be consumed on?
There's a plan out to do a large, large majority of sale out of the taproom, there's no plan to sign out of distributor right now, there's a lot of legislation actually being proposed right now to make distribution laws and messes just more perimeter-friendly, so I'm kind of waiting on the going rate first to hear more about that.
But the site seems prepared that if, at least to a certain scale, if that became viable, the site would involve that, and you could, I'm guessing there would be a door, some sort of shipping bay on the rear?
Yeah, there is a door on the back to receive shipments, as well as ship beer out of...
So, you're not going to be shipping out?
There'll be more movers at first, and throw a couple of checks in the back of mine.
Okay.
That's allowed, the size is normal, it's a 15-barrel system, and the volume we'll be doing is rolling with that for a little bit before I have to use a distributor to do that.
I'm sorry, you said a 15-barrel system?
Yes.
Right, to me, it's... I won't bore you with a lot of questions either. I mean, we have the definition of a microbrewery.
Right.
You meet the definition, I'm assuming, or you wouldn't be before us.
Right.
The, that, so we can't rewrite that. It's allowed by special permit in the zone, we don't have any challenges with setbacks or lot size. Really, it would just seem to me, is the procedure. You've already indicated that it's, well, I guess we can discuss whether it's an appropriate location for the use, but clearly the Greenbush Overlake District was intended to promote small business just like this, as you've said. Will it adversely affect the neighborhood? I think there could be discussion about that. There will not be any undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle or pedestrians as a result of the proposed use, we could discuss that. Adequate and appropriate facilities provided to assure proper operation of the proposed use or structure, I think that's, kind of runs with opening a business, so you want to have, be successful. There will not be any significant impact on any public or private water supply. Brewery, water, I'd like to have that question satisfied. And if the subject site is within the Water Resources Protection District, which it is, correct?
I think it's just outside of it.
It's just outside?
It is inside, it's not within the zone, A or the zone two of the...
But it's technically in the district, so we have to meet that question before us. Will not be any significant or cumulative impact upon municipal water supplies, the board shall give appropriate consideration for nitrate, nitrogen loading, in making this determination. The board shall require the applicant to provide all of the required submittals listed in Section 520.4F, prior to making such determination. I haven't looked at 520.4F, but...
Wait a minute. 520.4F? I think there is an F in 520.4.
Well, that'll make it easy. Well, that makes it easy.
There's no A, there's a J and an A. Right?
520.4.
Point four.
F. A, B, C, D...
A.
I can't get there.
All right, so you comply with 520.4F?
Whatever it is.
Are you surprised, is that the first time we're noticing that?
Yeah, there's an A, but there's no F.
Interesting.
It was likely to reference 520.5F, which is all of the dimensional requirements specifically in regards to slope of the land and the drainage system design. We did submit a full drainage system to the planning board, we did include all of those requirements under 520.5F, and that is being reviewed by the town's consultant engineer, probably as part of the planning board's supplemental.
I would, I concur with your stealth, you know, your sleuthing. All right, I guess, those are the areas that I'd have a concern. And I don't really have one, I just want them to be addressed for the public, and then we'll see if the public has any opinions, and we'll go from there.
Yeah.
Frank, you're up.
Well, as far as, if you go into each of those requirements, one by one, the specific site is an appropriate location, I think you addressed that, it's in Greenbush, it's in the overlay, I think we're okay on that. The use is developed, will it adversely affect the neighborhood? Well, Mr. Fagan is now part of a seventh-generation Situate family, he owns his house next to it, he owns his storage business behind it. The other uses in that direct area are, you know, we have a bar office there, and John's place, and, you know, I just represent to the board that I don't think it adversely affects the neighborhood, I think it's consistent with what we want to see in that overlay district down there. I think, obviously, we're going to have to satisfy the planning board, and the design review process, that the building and everything is okay. So, I think the use is okay there.
We have a bakery.
Right.
Commercial bakery. They sell product out, you know, out the door, we have a liquor store, we have a grain, or animal feed and supply, we have contractors, I mean, it's a, it's a commercial areas, and it's what we intended with the Greenbush overlay, so...
All right, as far as the undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, you know, I don't think, I think it's pretty consistent, again, with the businesses and the things that are currently being, you know, that are down in that area. We have, you know, parking there to take care of people who come out, there's not going to be anybody walking across from the abutting areas too there, I don't believe, so I represent that there's not a problem in that respect. Adequate, appropriate facilities we've provided to assure the proper operation and the proposed use of the structure. Well, the landlord's certainly going to build a building that is going to work for the tenant, and the tenant is not going to occupy it unless it's going to work, so I think we're okay there. As far as the public or private water supply, there have been meetings with the, with the town, with the TPW, with that respect, and I defer to perhaps, I did not attend those meetings, I defer to either. Greg, you had a meeting in terms of the utilization, what feeling for that type of thing?
Yeah, we discussed primarily with the sewer department, because we're moving to discharging our effluent into the sewer. But backing up and addressing the water first, so it's a 15-barrel system, our first year, we hope to do about 300 barrels of water, so if we recharge our goal, we use about 131,000 gallons of water. By comparison, EPA says a typical family four uses about 146,000 gallons a year, using Situate's water department statistics on their website, a Situate family four uses about 138,000 gallons, so it's tip, it's about the equivalent of a family four in the Situate. It's about our actual increase since the following year, but we max out, based on the book that happened, around 3,600 barrels, that's equivalent without three or four new big Situate. So, it's really, it might sound like a lot to talk in pounds, thousands of gallons, but it's really a few families worth of water, so I don't think it's going to be a huge strain of water use here. We did talk with Situate Sewer Department about our effluent going into the sewer. Good thing about beers, we use a lot of big beers, so it's actually less water used going into, less effluent going into the sewer than the water use, because we're hoping people will drink a barrel or more. So, we did talk to the sewer department back in March, discussed pre-treatment plan with them. I'd say 99% breweries in the US aren't pre-treating their effluent before they dump it in the sewer. We will do so, because we feel like it's better for the environment, and the sewer department regulates. Doing that, we'll basically need all the demands placed on us by the sewer department, we'll address, you know, the amount going into the sewer, the effluent, the pH neutral before it goes in, we'll work with the sewer department to monitor that, and signed off on the project, kind of, before, based on the evaluation back in March.
Great.
Do you think we should get some sort of indication from the sewer department and the water department, that what they're saying is good with them?
I'm thinking of the plan, the planning board has to approve this, but this is just a use. I think all of those things are going to be hit, you're going to hit all those points.
We're supposed to make the finding, though.
The use, but it was use, not...
That it won't have a significant impact on any public or private water supply.
Okay.
You could certainly make a contingent upon the completion of those reviews. No?
That work?
Yeah, that'd probably work.
Yeah, I think it's definitely going to look at it, we find some common understandings that's bothering the other...
No, you know, I've, we've run into this problem before, I think the previous one we just did is really a board of health question, this next one is, you point out, is really more the water department and the planning board, but we're charged with reviewing it as well, so...
I think that's a good suggestion, just in terms of, obviously, conditional upon, you know, that the planning board approval, in respect to that section.
Put the onus on the parties that are best able to evaluate them.
Right.
So, I think that's basically running through it in the Water Resources District, again, that's going to be looked at in detail. Since it's sewer, and it's not any runoff or any nitrate, nitrogen issues with this site, the way it's going to be developed.
Easy on the, you know, fertilizing that strip of grass there, next to your property, so. Anything?
I think I'm good.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for, against, or ask questions of the applicant? Through the chair. Rossa? Yes, sir? Go for it.
No, I'm a neighbor, next door. It seems like they've addressed a setback here, she's given the water issues that they were talking about, they said they maxed out at the equivalent of four, seven homes. And, I know this, I don't know where it is, but there's a question, if there is a use seat on the former property, where they've got the dumpster, if you see on the site plan, I can't remember the exact word, but there was... the exact worry, but there was. I did grant that several years ago.
Yeah.
So that's...
Well, and the sighting of the dumpster on this plant is abutting a...
An easement.
It's an easement area.
An easement's granted to this parcel to allow use in it.
No other comments in the audience? Would seem to me. Frank, you've got the planning board ahead of you.
Yep, we will, and we've certainly laid the table with them, and they've been very receptive so far to everything they've seen. There'll be a lot of details to be obvious with them, but I think we're optimistic.
I'll move to grant the special permit, or I want to make the motion?
Go for it.
Please.
Move to grant...move to grant the special permit requested for the proposed microbury by Whitecrest Realty LLC on a plan by Morse Engineering dated 6/13/16, specifically finding that the under 950.3, the application satisfies A, B, and C...
Indeed.
Indeed.
And D. And relying upon the applicant's presentation to planning board and the associated boards that E and F will be met.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Want to write that?
Good luck.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Otherwise, I have to.
I'll give you a call.
I might not be here.
Sounds like a great idea. Business is good. Working more in the summer than I wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely.
You too.
Good luck. Good luck.
Actually, do we need those pictures in the file? This one?
I have all the copies.
These we'll keep, but you can take that with you.
Good luck. Thank you. What's the...what's the...what's the timeframe? Is there a delay, or is it an ASAP project?
I don't know what you have. I don't know what to say.
Untold.
Untold here?
Untold brewery.
Untold brewery.
Oh.
Very good.
Oh my gosh, we still have Central Avenue. This is late tonight.
Yeah, Massachusetts.
It's dark.
Well, that's great. Good for the town.
Okay, then there were two. All right. Lot of paperwork on this next one. My stack is huge. Where'd it go?
Not many of them left.
Yeah.
All right.
Neil J. Greco of 319 Central Avenue in Hummerock, opposing that federal law, Chapter 48, Section 6, filing question currently to add a second floor to the non-conforming single-family quality, which will increase the 50 blocks average floor footage by 20%. Property located at 319 Central Avenue in Hummerock, set at Route 68, Block 2, R. 76.
Hello?
Good evening.
Mr. Greco, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you tell us what you are looking to do?
This is my second time before the board. I was here in 2011-ish. I'm repairing the backside of my property, my home at 319 Central. So this is the continuation of that project. In that permit I filed, it actually said in preparation for the second floor. So what you're seeing here is a proposal for that second floor. It sits within the existing footprint. There's modifications to the footprint whatsoever. You also have been provided with a structural engineering plan. I know there's a big stack of paperwork there, but I wanted you to have everything that I have. So I went with elevation certificates, block plan, structural engineering, architectural.
Looks pretty complete. So...
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Do we have the percentage of increase that you were looking to...
Sixty percent.
Sixty.
Is that on the...is that on one of the paperwork?
On the block plan, it says down the bottom, propose second floor. This is a 20 square feet, a constructed on an existing footprint of 950 square feet.
Okay.
I got your change, long as you have.
Aw, Frank.
I was under attention.
Nope, I'm sure it was. I was wondering, when I looked at this, I'm like, there's not much here.
I just was...the one thing I noticed, besides the fact that I thought it was a very tractable design, is that you are bumping the front out with a porch.
Yeah, just that little overhang on the doors.
Right. And that is, I think, I noticed a four-foot, seven feet wide by four foot deep, approximately. I mean, that's what I tried to...
Is that bumped out?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so. I think it's...
Is that the column?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the existing...there's an existing platform there.
Right. The difference is, is you're adding a roof to it. So it's actually...it's actually considering that you are taking your front setback four feet closer.
I think four feet is okay.
Well, it's what I...it's what I noticed on...let me tell you. Oh, I know what it is. I even referenced the map. A1, if you look at A1, you've got a three-foot, three-foot, and then another looks to me like another one-foot overhang, but maybe I'm misreading that. Maybe that's a stoop?
It's an existing stoop.
It's at the top of the...
Let's see. Three foot existing, that's three foot out from the house. And then I think what that one foot is, is the step off of that one stoop.
Okay, so the roof overhang is only three feet?
Right.
Okay. That does change your...
I hadn't thought about that. It doesn't change the footprint.
Right, yeah. Well, it's actually a change to the setback.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay, so...
One foot is the step.
You think that one foot is the step? Okay, yeah, so it's a...so it would...
If you look at A5, you get a size view of that. You can see the existing stoop and another step underneath it.
Got it. Okay, so you think it's three foot and then another one foot to the stoop? Okay. I mean, it's...
So it's going to 21.6.
Right, 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 which we have done. It's already...you're already into the front setback, pre-existing, 24 or something. It's another three, but it's just something we have to consider.
Aside from the front stoop, all the other additions over the existing portion.
Right.
Is it a pier system now?
No.
Is it a pier system now?
No.
No, so it's a foundation?
It's...it is on the pullback side of the house. That's what I underpinned.
Yep.
So that's all the foundation. The front part of the house is crawl space, and my structural engineering chose how I'm offsetting the door when it comes out front.
Like the roof went right over my head. So we just have to change your exist...your proposed setback would be 21...21.6. I don't have any questions. Frank?
Nope.
Ed?
No.
So are these engineered site plans? This is?
There is an engineered site plan.
That doesn't show the proposed improvements, right? Just because we held somebody else up on that tonight.
That's not...that doesn't cover that?
Well, it's a very...it's a miniscule difference. I would argue we should make an exception to the rule, but for consistency's sake, we held up another applicant.
Right. I don't disagree, but that's not...
Should be revised to say proposed is 21.6.
Yeah, and should plot the new setback of the roof over the front stoop.
On the front part, it's not mentioned there. So that should come from, instead of the corner of the house, it should come from...
Right. That plotting shouldn't necessarily go away. It could stay.
It should be added.
But we should see the new proposed roof.
Yeah, and he might just do a big one, just for the fun of it.
On full size, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And if you would ask him to put the...he's going to do that. He probably hasn't done...never mind. With proposed setbacks. Bob, do you have any comments, questions concerned?
Actually, yes, I do.
Okay.
The project that we're looking at is certainly a substantial improvement. There's no question about that. The house, according to the new FEMA mapping, is in an AE-15 flood zone. So what that means, basically, is the home has to meet all of the requirements, the existing house as well as the new construction of a building within the AE-15 flood zone. And I don't have those memorized or with me, but there's a substantial and pretty specific list of things that need to be accomplished by the design. I don't have your elevation certificate, sir, but is that...what does that show your main floor at? Do you recall?
Fifty feet of foundation.
Okay. Because you're in an AE-15, you may or may not qualify with an exact 15-foot elevation for your first floor. That's obviously a serious question to be asked. Of your...I would ask it of your engineer. Just have him review the requirements in the Mass Building Code for construction in a flood zone and projects that are deemed substantial improvements.
So we...I have done that, and I believe that in that structural engineering plan, there's wind performance document that has been completed as well as flood elevation. And my understanding is that we're currently in an AE-10 zone. It's an AE-15 that will pass this year.
Yes. Well, it's already been passed by FEMA. The town's already received their letter from FEMA of notification. If you will, it needs to be passed by town leaders.
Yeah, yeah. And that my compliance recommended by the building department is to move my major appliances out of the basement.
Right.
Which I'm prepared to incur that at a short expense, which is getting my furnace and hot water heater out of the basement, which is a little premature. I've owned the house for 15 years. There's nothing wrong with the furnace, so I'm willing to take that up. Also, with the breakaway storm windows, there are three windows in place.
Yeah, that doesn't...that doesn't really reflect on the flood situation, but I'm sorry, continue.
So I'm prepared to conform in as many ways to the AE-15 requirements as I understand them.
Okay. As I said, I'm not...I don't have everything in front of me. If you're in an AE-10 now and your building permit is issued prior to the adoption of the new flood elevation mapping by the town, that's still a gray area. We've been directed, if you will, by FEMA to use the new elevations going forward.
And again, my understanding is that it's already been adopted by conservation. And we're not impacting any conservation requirements yet. I understand the AE-10, AE-15 requirement, which is why I'm trying to scramble to get this in before the AE-15 happens, because what I'm worried about is that my house has to actually go up on high levels, which would be a real deterrent to the distraction of the neighborhood. This is a...I don't know if you're familiar with the far end of Hummerock on the left?
Yeah.
My house would stick out like a sore thumb. It would be a shit to do that. I understand the compliance, and I'm trying to get there at least as close as I can.
Yeah, I mean, you can get the permit from the zoning board that you're after tonight without going, you know, without jumping through that hoop, but at some point, when you apply for a building permit, you're going to have to jump through that hoop and hopefully...I...like I said, I'm not prepared to say it's a done deal at this point.
Okay, so if that application were...assuming that we're granted the permit, the special permit from the zoning board, and the building permit is applied for within minutes, would it have to be AE-10 compliant or AE-15 compliant?
I need to talk to some people about that. I can't tell you.
My understanding is, and the investment law of my plan so far has been, until AE-15 is passed, I have to comply with AE-10. That's my understanding.
Okay. And I'm not saying that's incorrect. I'm saying...
Or correct.
Or correct, yeah, exactly.
Does this, Bob, affect anything that we're looking at tonight, this discussion?
I don't think so, sir, I know.
Okay.
No, I mean, you're looking at setbacks and compliance with zoning regulations, which this is building regulations we're talking about.
Okay. Anybody from the audience wish to be heard on this? Anybody...anybody else? Ed, Frank? Okay, do we have a motion? Motion.
The special permit request of Neil J. Greco for the property at 319 Central Avenue in Hummerock for the proposed second-story addition and front-covered entryway stoop porch area addition, and a finding that any intensification of the front yard setback nonconformity is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, with the requirement that a revised plot plan be submitted with the application showing the proposed covered front porch area and the resulting proposed front setback.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, whose turn to write that?
Don't look at me.
Look at me. I'm writing.
I got conditions to draft.
Look at me. I'll take it.
John, yay, John.
I'm writing the other ones.
Yeah, we...
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, that's a lot of paperwork. Boy, I hope you can get it to...oh, these are for Annie. Somehow I got some duplicates. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've got Dayton Road.
I bet they're yours.
Huh?
Was there drawers here? Look at...there's a lollipop in that one.
Yeah, that's true.
There's no drawer in mine.
Bob, that was a...good luck. Sounds complex.
It is, but, you know... It is, but, you know, the requirements are fairly straightforward. The question, the question really is, are we bound by the new mapping today? Or only after town meeting? I think FEMA would tell you we're bound by it today.
I understand where you were both coming from.
Same question. When it goes the other way, when people come out of the floodway and are going down.
True.
They had to wait for the adoption to take place before they would.
Yep.
All righty.
I need to talk to Nancy about that one.
And there is one. This is probably, in some ways, hopefully, is very complicated in some ways, but hopefully, simple. I'll let Annie read it, and then we can chat about where we're going.
Request for modification of comprehensive permit for Stockbridge Woods. Stockbridge Two Realty Trust, request a modification to the comprehensive permit. Primary conditions are to, one, allow the transfer of the comprehensive permit to the new buyer by allowing the permit to be sold to Stockbridge Situate Stockbridge Woods LLC. Two, make some non-material changes to provisions of the agreement to reflect more typical construction conditions and requirements for the Stockbridge Woods project located off Stockbridge Road, Massachusetts.
Okay, so. You were in here first, when was it?
This project, I've been coming here for a number of years.
Well, no, 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 I'm talking.
We filed this request on May 9.
Okay, and then we.
We haven't had a hearing yet.
Oh, okay.
We've been extending the timeframe.
That's right.
It was mutually agreed upon, and we would do that because we thought that with some of the town groups that we could explain what we were looking for, maybe have consensus.
Right, and so I know I was at one of those meetings. Why don't you just explain to the board what you went through to get you here today with what we hope is going to be something that we can live with?
Hi, just for the record, I'm Attorney Robert Galvin, with the is Jim O'Boyle. Jim is involved in the Stockbridge Woods project now. Blue Si is in the back. She's been involved since the beginning. In any event, so we submitted our request back on May 9 for insubstantial changes to the comprehensive permit. Jim has been speaking with lenders interested in financing this project. They went over the existing comprehensive permit. There were some things that they thought that they really needed to have changed that really don't ultimately change too much about the project that we would like to have altered in a formal way by the board. So we met with Neil Duggan, Bob, you, Sarah, Pat Galvin, maybe one or two other people. Laura Carbo, I think, mother of.
Yeah, Laura was there, yep.
And we basically just went through, very specifically, the changes that we were seeking to be comprehensive permit. And we were able to answer questions. Jim is also independently gone and met with fire chief on a couple of occasions as they're in June.
Yeah.
Because one of the things we were asking to change had to do with phasing, and it was concerned that maybe there could be some fire safety access problems. My understanding is that Neil Duggan, before he retired, did actually fill the plans to John Cheshire, who we would expect going forward in the construction phase will be the construction monitor and also act for the conservation portion as their construction monitor, perfectly okay with us. So I think what we have is consensus on all issues with one issue really reserved to you to discuss tonight and have some bonding. So let me explain what the changes were. I actually emailed Sarah earlier this week kind of a summary of what the existing condition was and the proposed new condition.
Did not everybody get this?
I got it.
You got it?
It was emailed, yeah.
I have some extra copies if anyone needs.
Yeah, do you have?
I would love a copy. I didn't print mine out. I'm looking at it on my phone.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody has one.
Can I get one too, sir? Do you have an action?
They just didn't print them together.
I think, sorry, I just, I just got.
You know, we could get, can we get copies?
I got this in an email from you today. Maybe again, I certainly could have gotten it before.
I think it was, do you want my copy, Annie?
That's a clean copy there, I just gave.
Okay.
Yes, here. Do you like it?
Yeah, I've got mine, mine's stapled, so. John needs one and Ed needs one, too. And you've got one. Frank, you've got yours.
I've got one.
Yeah, I mean, I have it on my phone here. I have it in my email. I can give up this one.
Just get another one, probably easier. I had some notes, and I don't know what happened to them. Ninety-seven, first press release.
Yeah, I have the earlier version of it. Has it changed since, huh?
Uh, I don't know.
Changed since June 13.
Right.
This is the May 9 one.
The original letter.
That's been updated?
Well, what we did, I think we were asked with the existing condition is a proposed condition like this.
Executive paragraphs.
Yeah.
I have five copies of this phasing plan in the smaller version.
Oh, that's good, too, yeah, yes. Does that change from the first meeting that we had?
Yes.
Correct.
And Robert Mello from the fire. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Think I have that.
Thank you very much.
So, while we're waiting, any relation to Bob Galvin, the attorney who drafted much of the condominium statute in Massachusetts, or?
Uh, no, he's, no, he's just recently retired, too.
All right, I was caught off guard by your name, but great.
He's Robert J.
I got you.
Thank you.
Okay. How would you like to proceed with this, Bob?
Maybe it'd just be very simple to kind of just go through it with you one by one. The board should be aware that Mr. Duggan, before he retired, actually wrote an email, and I think it, I provided it to him as early as this week. He basically thought that, I think, saying everything that he said, he just was recommending now that we had got to a stage where he felt that changes we were requesting were insubstantial and was recommending a rule. So the first one had to do with condition seven, and it had to do with the applicant not getting any building permit until we've executed and delivered a regulatory agreement. And basically, that conflicts with our ability to get financing. So what we've asked that you do, instead of holding up a building permit, hold up occupancy permits until we've executed and delivered the regulatory agreement. It shouldn't affect anything at all, and it would allow us to proceed with our financing. Condition number 14. We were just looking for one sentence change, again relating to building and occupancy permits. For the second sentence, applicant may not receive a building permit until a copy of the regulatory agreement has been provided to the board. The, we've just asked that if you change that it's not, you won't get an occupancy permit until you've got the approved regulatory agreement. We use the word approved regulatory agreement and occupancy permit there. It's the same reasoning as we would answer the change in seven. Number nine had to do with the lighting plan, and if you... I guess my understanding with this is that the lighting plan would be submitted to the building inspector prior to us getting an occupancy permit, because there could be some changes to the lighting plan as the building units. Is there any other way out of that, Jim?
Essentially, the lighting plan will tie into the common area, public meters on the buildings, and also the power company and its design. So I just need to work with them while we're constructing the site, but I can certainly provide it and satisfy the condition prior to an occupancy permit.
The fourth change had to do with condition 11. And basically, some of you may recall that we went through an extensive review of the site and stormwater plans, which took place over a very long period of time. And I think we've got a consensus set of plans that we can really move forward with now. And the board should be aware that there's actually a new final order of conditions from the Department of Environmental Protection. We basically got a set of plans that really we can build with. So we're basically asking you, instead of just leaving it out vague as to whether we've got a final set of plans, to obligate us to follow the approved site plans that you've already specifically approved, and those are the ones dated May 5, 2015. And they were approved on May 21, 2015. And then we're also asking you just to have all building construction to be formed in accordance with the most recent, the most current version of the State Building Code, in effect at the time of the issuance of the building plans.
If I might interrupt, building inspector asked that we ensure that by which I'm agree.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just a little air in me.
Yeah.
Why do you need to take out the first two sentences? "All such work shall be performed in accordance with current engineering and construction. All construction shall be done to best management standards." Why does that make?
This project is actually grandfathered, in a sense, and the current stormwater management regulations are not applicable to this project because it actually received its original approval prior to the adoption of those new stormwater management regulations. So we're following the prior version of the DEP stormwater.
But the condition says all utility work. It's not just, it's just not just stormwater.
Well, we're keeping all utility work.
Oh, yeah, we're keeping the first.
First sentences are still there.
Keeping the first.
I understand you're keeping the first sentence, but the next two sentences apply to all utility work other than stormwater as well. So you're taking out the, I'm going to comply with these standards for the others' utility work, right? I mean, I'm being the lawyer.
I think it's more of a reiteration of things that they would already be subject to, so the reiteration creates a little bit of a conflict. I see what you're getting at, but I think.
I see two, I, I think what we're saying is that these two conditions were outstanding when the latter, when the prior modification occurred. So what we did is we came up with a final set of plans that conform in every respect and were pay review. Therefore, they do comply with best management standards. Every detail was shown on these plans, so.
Well, in addition, the underwriters are the ones picking this up because since this decision was drafted, it's only been extended. We have gone through a settlement process with the town, DEP Stormwater Management, and we're actually issued recently in June the amended final order of conditions, which I believe this was mostly outstanding to ensure that those items became in compliance, and we have since done that as well. So we just don't want things open-ended for further review, or to think it's not in compliance when we have the final orders in our hands.
I mean, the first sentence still said, "in conformance with the regulations of the town." I'm not sure we need to be concerned after it saying, "in accordance with," um, you know, that it doesn't say "to the best management standards" or "construction standards." There's belt and suspenders and something else already in there.
It just seemed like we were taking something, a standard, out that was unnecessary, but.
Well, you were taking this data out because it's not being built to current engineering, construction standards, if you take that very literally.
Yeah, I understand the problem you articulated, yeah. All right, if everybody else is comfortable with it, I'll live with it.
Okay, condition number 26. The original permit issued to Stockbridge Two Realty Trust for Stockbridge Woods LLC, we're actually asking you to allow us to convey it to Situate Stockbridge Woods LLC, which is an entity we're going to create, which will become a limited dividend organization capable of constructing this project. The sixth change basically had to do with the basic plan that Jim just handed out. Originally, the idea was that it would be constructed in two phases. Jim can explain to you how we would like to construct it now. Would you do that now?
Sure.
I think it will be self-evident, really, from the change.
We went through with the fire department and the building inspector. This Phase 1 and Phase 1A will obviously be built together. And I set up the phases so that the fire department could have a turnaround here and a turnaround here while we're constructing this. During that process, we're going to install the hydrant locations they called for in each phase. So prior to construction starting, the hydrant will go in place. And then we'll be fencing off this area here so that the other areas do not be accessed after the first phase is done, to be fenced off for protection of the residents so that they can come in and out of the complex. We'll then have a bar access here. Walk around this way is unfinished pavement, if you will, unfinished roads, while we're building Phase 2. Same thing, hydrants and fencing location will be in. Then we'll come back to Phase 3, build this phase, and then walk out on Phase 4. This way, as we construct the phases, people can safely go in and out through the entry. So the first phase will come online, then the second phase, which is a cul-de-sac. Then the third phase comes online. People will be able to access out this way safely while we're building the fourth. So we broke up the plan, the layouts, the turnarounds, and the hydrants so that it met with an easier way to construct the site in four phases.
And so the change that we're asking for is to adopt this phasing plan. The rest of the language in the proposed condition are basically things that we discussed with Mr. Duggan. And we debated a little bit back and forth as to roadway completion, and that's why the last sentence reads, "The roadway shall be sufficiently completed each phase when the fire department asphalt is completed, refrigeration utilities installed," which is typical of what happens in a subdivision.
And if I can just interject again, Bob was there, and Neil was there, and this has, when you guys first came to it, it was kind of turned around. You were going to start at the back, and then they were going to move forward. The fire department, fire chief looked at this, and I personally talked to Neil this week, and, you know, and I'm telling you, when you think that, when you talk about having discussed this, this was hours' worth of meetings.
Yep, sure.
You know, so we wouldn't have to do that involving stuff that we really don't know a lot about.
Amen. That's awesome.
So, you know, for me, I'm very comfortable having had Bob at the meetings, Neil at the meetings, and the fire chief at the meeting all approving of this particular phasing plan, you know. You guys might have some particular questions, but, and hopefully, they could get answered, but it was vetted for hours, all of these, right? I mean, hours.
The last change basically had to do with the concept of ASBIL plans. And the existing condition said proof of ASBILs had to be, filing of ASBILs had to be provided prior to the issuance of any temporary permit certificate of occupancy. ASBILs, as we propose in the new condition, would be submitted as each foundation goes in, as each building is completed, prior to any occupancy permit in each building, so that we can not be expected to submit an ASBIL before we've built the entire subdivision. So that seemed to make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
The last issue that we have in its thought, it was a request. The last issue that we have, and it's not, it was a request that was made either by Neil or somebody else on behalf of the town, had to do with the performance guarantees, is an existing condition number forty-one. And it's not in my letter, because it's not something we asked for, but it's something that the town asked for from us. We were going to be doing some work within the layout of Stockbridge Road, and the town, when we originally got the permit amended, wanted some surety for any work that we were doing within the layout of the way, which seemed completely reasonable to us. So we agreed to that. But we were asked if we would be willing to provide some surety, so that the town and maybe future residents could be assured that the infrastructure within appropriately. And I think Jim, on behalf of the owner, is, we are willing to do that. If you would like to make that modification to the corporate's permit, we would accept that modification.
Well, let me add, the interest that I have is that it be done per phase. So as I finish the first phase, I'll bond the insurance and the inclusion of that, same with the second phase and on. Like any project, if you build 20 or 40 units and stop, I don't want to have a bond outstanding for two phases I may not build, because it doesn't economically make sense to build. I might build half the project, rent them out and wait, or whatever the case might be. So I just wanted it tied to each phase that we're working on and requesting permits on.
And what's your take on that, Bob?
I think it makes sense, although I know our, not concern, but certainly our wish is that the entire projects, project be constructed in a linear fashion and completed, you know, expeditiously as possible. So I can certainly understand that market forces and development prospects may wax and wane during the course of a project such as this. As long as each phase is self-sustaining and can be, you know, looked at as a standalone development, I think we'd have no problem with that. The people to sort of make that judgment would be public safety, certainly, conservation. You wouldn't want to have work started that would affect runoff or wetlands or anything like that, and then not completed.
Right.
And I think we've said that each phase is going to be basically a standalone in all of those issues. So if that's the case, then, you know, I could, I could understand this situation.
Okay.
And conservation does have some strict standards in the DEP final decision that basically says that we can't leave it in a state where there could be environmental harms.
Right, I read that. I read that.
That must have been at least part of the phasing design, where they now are starting from the front, because you're not driving through a construction site to get to the back phases, right?
Correct, yep.
It seems to make sense.
And the fact that, for instance, the central treatment plant is built as part of Phase One, you know, that sort of thing.
Right. And each phase, as you see, has the appropriate drainage pond covering the road areas as associated with those networks. So we designed the phase in talking with all of the town personnel, so that we could incorporate every aspect of each phase safely.
So how would you propose that to be worded?
Well, we, the reason we didn't discuss this before was because it's essentially going to be private driveways, never be submitted. You agreed upon the infrastructure in each phase.
In each phase, all completion.
I think probably you'd probably want John Chesha to recommend a bond amount.
Well, that's what Neil had said to me, that.
I would think that that's what normally would happen.
You know, yeah.
He would.
In an amount approved, then, by John Chesha after review of the necessary documents?
Right, for each phase.
For each phase.
We'll come in and we'll sit down with him and say, you know, this is what it is, and he'll look at it, and he'll determine a bond amount.
Right.
Who does the bond run to?
What's that?
Who does the bond run to?
Town, the town.
Yeah, we run to the town.
So if the town has to come in and finish up, it pays for it.
Call the bond to put the final pavement code on or whatever's left in that phase.
On a private driveway?
Yeah. Don't muck up the works, you.
Don't muck up the works. The town would need an easement to come in and do the work.
No, no, no. The town would have.
Yeah, we can issue the bond with the appropriate language.
Oh, okay. You can include that in there. Well, that's part of the, we're going into the wording of the bond.
Yeah.
There's, just having money running to you is great.
Right, right.
You need the property rights.
It's a little different than a subdivision here. Now, this is just like an apartment complex. So that's why it's, the bond wasn't something that we mentioned.
Right, yeah, no.
Yeah, I understand. It's not in the original permit.
No, I understand that portion.
But I'm willing to.
Right, no, I think.
You want to do.
Our question was the language of how the, of the bond, to the extent we're amending the comprehensive permit.
So run to the town with appropriate easements for access and completion.
Again, I don't want to get involved with the bond running. That sounds great, but.
Me either.
But, but yes, it sounds like you would need an easement for that to have any purpose. It's great the town gets money to do work on your property. The town needs the right to do work on your property as well.
And we're expecting, we're going to bring it right to bond, the code lights on. We're expecting that the amounts will be pretty minimal when they're reviewed.
Yeah, we're not going to be offering the bond. We're going to actually do the work, and he's going to be looking for an occupancy permit, and then he's going to provide the bond, so that you'll be assured that the top coat of asphalt will go in.
Is that, you, the bond happens before you get the occupancy permit? Is that it? It's not beforehand?
Yeah, so you have protection.
The occupancy is the collateral.
Okay.
To get the bond.
Right. We expect that, and the way the phases are, the roadways are not that wide, not that long, so we can effectively do a lot of it within that phase. By the time we get to the first occupancy, because they're smaller phases, we can just issue the bond. It should only be the top coat, and if a couple of elements haven't come in because of deliveries, that's all I expect.
Okay. Bob, are you familiar with writing the language for that?
Well, I was just going to, just writing it out right now. The applicant should provide an surety bond, an amount determined by the town to ensure the completion.
The town through its engineer.
Self-engineer.
Yeah.
Any amount approved by the town's peer review engineer?
Yeah, and that's what we call.
To ensure the completion of the infrastructure in each phase on a per-phase basis.
Correct. I think that sounds right.
Yeah.
Does that right sound right?
It sounds right. If there's a doubt, you might consider having the language, when it's finally crafted, reviewed by the town's attorney.
Right, we probably should do that. Is that, who is that these days?
Brandon Moss.
Oh, Brandon Moss, okay.
Same, same firm.
Yep.
Yeah, with the thought on, it's great to have the money running to you, but then say you need to utilize that money. How do you go on to private property and make improvements? That's, I'd like, if that's something that was important in all these meetings, I'd like to make sure that we close the loop on that.
Yeah, I see. You would know that more than us, doing real estate stuff. And I, you know.
Yeah, whatever's reasonable, we'll do.
With the block of lines, Jenny. You probably wanted any ways for fire safety access, and that would be something we would be willing to provide in any circumstance.
Yeah. So you guys will get the contract with Chesha for the construction review, engineering review?
Well, the town will.
Whoever it is at that time.
Provide you with a proposal that I will approve.
Right.
He's technically working for the town, so you'll get the proposal, and I'll authorize it, and then we fund your account in advance, and then that will fund all his inspections. We're expecting both conservation and this board would use Chesha to have coming around.
Okay.
I've written it out, and I can provide that to Annie.
Yeah, well, can you, I would, if you could just send this in Word document, and then, I don't know if it is in a Word or PDF.
Yep.
I didn't know if I got it in Word or PDF.
I think we got Word document.
Okay, then we can do that.
You want me to send you this language in a?
Sure. Then I can, yeah, because then I can, I can do the, this isn't a big deal decision.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are just, you incorporate maybe, you know, the new conditions, and then the requirement for the bond.
Right.
That's it. It's a kind of a letter.
Right.
So that I can press on with financing and good graces of the project, will the board be taking up both the motions?
As far as I know. Well, I guess the first question is, do you have any questions?
I have no questions about what was on here.
Right. Ed?
No, my questions have been answered with respect to the isolated aspect of each book in the phases.
Yeah, I mean, the seven proposed changes are not substantial for the project.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Sure, if you want me to try one.
I, yeah, or finding, maybe. I meant to find. I think it's a motion to find.
Yeah, we got to find that they're insubstantial, and then we approve them, right? Or just find it?
Yeah, both, I think.
Yeah, so on Stockbridge Wood's proposed changes to the comprehensive permit with respect to existing condition seven, fourteen, nine, eleven, twenty-six, twenty-eight, and forty-five, I move that the board find that each of the proposed new conditions are insubstantial changes, and that the board approve the proposed new conditions.
Sorry, sir.
All in favor?
Is there a name change that we have to?
It's one of the provisions.
So I would, I would be amending these as part of the.
The attached to your.
Right.
Vote, or however we're going to do that. Should be that phasing plan, because that's referencing the condition.
Right, that and this.
I have, just so both you and the board can take a note, the phasing plan is revised February, I'm sorry, June 13, 2016, which incorporates the fire department phasing changes.
Thank you. Is that a, is the full-size available in electronic format?
Yes, that's a PDF I printed from, so I sent it over in PDF earlier. I can resend it.
In the full-size?
In the full-size, yeah.
Just that, that way you can.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't as painful as those meetings.
I appreciate it very much. Wait a minute, I want this to rest.
Yeah.
Sorry, I can't tell a lot.
Yeah, yeah, right, it's not.
It looked like you were hitting that with.
Oh, no, 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 I know, early on it was slow. Sorry about that, but, no, that's good. There was a lot of people who were involved in those meetings to avoid having to sit here for six hours.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
That's a way to do things.
It was, it was. It was a good way to do it.
Good luck.
Thank you. We'll see you again, I'm sure.
End it up, you wanted the June minutes?
I'm going to leave that full-size for you? I have plenty of that.
Yeah, no, you can leave that with Annie, she'll put it in the file.
Fold it up and have one for reference.
Yeah, that would be super.
Just the June?
I'll fold it up for you.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You asked for a motion, please.
Yeah, later, take a bow shit for the June meetings.
Move to accept the June minutes as emailed and revised.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Hold it up for this.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, good night. Good night, everybody.